Ready?
Mm-hmm.
Let me start off today. This is the meeting of the zoning Board of Appeal meeting for December 8th, by congratulating Jessica Thomas. She's the new Assistant Commissioner and will be continuing, Miss Ambassador. So, welcome, Jessica.
Thank you.
So, the zoning Board of Appeal for December 8th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the Open Meeting Law and Executive Order of Governor Baker, suspending certain provisions thereof due to the ongoing public health crisis. This hearing of the Board is being held remotely via the WebEx Event Platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the Board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing by telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the Public Notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on screen and you will remain muted until administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the Board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project. That is, those individuals who live closest to the project. To comment on an appeal, please click the Raise Your Hand icon in the application via the WebEx Event Platform. To raise your hand, click the Participant Information icon. From there, find your name and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand-raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be virtually raised. Click it again and your hand should go down. If you are connected to this hearing by telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand. Just to repeat that again, if you are connecting by telephone, please press *3 to raise your hand. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Before we start, I'd like to take a roll call of Board members. Mr. Fortune?
Here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Ehrlich?
Here.
Mr. Rogirio?
Here.
Mr. Legris?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Kandell? Mr. Deboe?
Present, good morning.
Good morning. Can we... Jessica, can you please tell me when Mr. Kandell joins? And please, all members, make sure that your video is streaming. I'd like to just confirm, Jeff Hampton from the BPD, I thought I heard you earlier.
You did. Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Okay, so let's begin. Mr. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business is the hearing minutes of the July 7th, 2020, July 14th, 2020, and July 21st, 2020 minutes meetings. Need a motion?
Motion.
May I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next first case for extension, calling BOA 787-634-500 to 502A East Broadway. Madam Chair, I believe this won't expire until 5/3 of 2021, but I'll let Mr. Christopher move the explain. Some name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is James Christopher of R.C.A.L.C. With the business address of 415 De Ponte D'Ab. Yeah, we're working on, this is 502 East Broadway, approved before this Board, and the decision is set to expire in a few months. We are working on the building permit drawings now and have filed. We just thought that it would be beneficial to seek the extension in case we hit any snags and as a matter of precaution.
You know, I appreciate you jumping the gun, Mr. Christopher, but can we hold off on this until we are closer to the date? Because then you can inform us whether you in fact do or do not need. We are reluctant to give too many extensions, so we just want you to be cautious and give us a heads up when we get closer to the date. Okay, so we'll see you in April.
Madam Chair, the next case is with Mr. Christopher. It's the same situation.
Okay, Mr. Christopher, I'm looking forward to seeing you again in April.
All right.
Okay, see you in the new year.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I should call it into the record, though, just for safety sake here. So, I'm going to recall both cases and then we'll go from there. So, Case BOA 787-634-500 to 502 East Broadway, Case BOA 832-215-36 Spring Garden Street. So, the motion basically is we'll see them in 2020. They technically don't expire until 5/3 and 5/10, respectively, of 2021.
Exactly.
So, do we need a motion or anything, or no?
I don't... Oh, yeah, let's just get a motion.
I'm going to motion to defer.
Mr. Deboe?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case for building code, calling BOA 112-9365-103 Warren Avenue. This is the ninth edition 780 CMR 1011, install a roof deck. The violations of 1011.12.2 roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof, access to the roof shall be provided through a penthouse complying with 1510.2. The exception in buildings without an occupied roof, access to the roof shall be permitted to a roof hatch or trapdoor not less than 16 square feet in area and having a minimum dimension of two feet. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, Alpine Advisory Services, Alpine Way, Boston, Mass. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. We are seeking relief from the requirement of a penthouse access to a roof deck which is code compliant, suggesting that a safety compliant alternative is the proposed hatch, which is the customary means of egress to roof decks in the South End Historic District. The hatch will maintain the historic streetscape and roof scape homogeneity of the area, which is a defining characteristic of the Landmarks District.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Ehrlich?
Yeah, the drawing show hatch. And as you certainly know, that we are in favor of that.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second, Joe.
Second, Legris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Please, address before you talk.
Secretary, this is Mike Ross. The address is 95-97 Addison Street.
Thank you. This is for the record, calling BOA 1099054, 95 to 97 Addison Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi. Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is Mike Ross. With the business address of One International Place, Attorney. I have one more after this. We're working with the Mayor's Office as well as the District City Council to work out some remaining issues relating to community concerns. We've been at it for quite some time on this project and would ask for a deferral.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed and deferrals?
The date will be March 23rd at 12:30. Mr. Ross, what's the address?
1201 Saratoga Street.
For the record, calling BOA 110-7041, 1201 Saratoga Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Mike Ross, Attorney. Again, this is similar. We've been at it around the same amount of time, also in East Boston, and we would defer just to get a little bit more time to work through any of the community concerns that have been raised.
Thank you. Is... I noticed the applicant on both cases is the same. Is there a good back and forth that's occurring or is it stalled in some way?
There is a good back and forth. There's been probably six versions of this building gradually getting smaller and smaller. And we're getting close.
Okay, so may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer, Madam Chair.
Is there a second? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We'll have a date of March 23rd at 12:30.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
Mr. Fortune, 200 L Street, please.
For the record, calling BOA 111-383-200L Street. Name and address for the record, please.
One of me, Madam Chair, members of the Board. My name is George Morancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, unfortunately, the revised plans have not been stamped by ISD, so they're not available for the Board to see this morning. Therefore, I'm going to have to ask for a deferral, please.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
We have a date of March 23rd at 12:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals to 9:30? Address, please. Are there any raised hands, Madam Ambassador?
No, sir.
Call the first case. BOA 108-5883, 197 Chelsea Street. This is a rehab existing structure. Erect a vertical addition onto the existing building. Change occupancy to a laundromat on the first floor and three residential units above. The violation is Article 27T-5. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, a laudary for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio was excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. Article 53, Section 56, austere parking is insufficient. And Article 9, Section 1, extension of a nonconforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Chief.
Madam Chair, Attorney Lenz, one second. Madam Chair, Coastallegro's Lucius himself.
Okay, so this... Is Mr. Kandell on?
Yes.
Don't see his name yet.
Madam Chair, I believe I had seen his name on there. Yeah, he's on.
Okay, okay. So, this is a sixth member board. We can go ahead with hearing this case. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a pre-existing nonconforming use, a nonconforming structure located in, I guess would best describe as Lower Eagle Hill. It consists of a laundromat at the ground level with two residential units above. Our proposal involves a complete rehabilitation of the entire building, including upgrades to life safety. We are proposing a change of occupancy from the existing conditions of two units and a laundromat to three units and a laundromat. It is located in the 3F 2000 district. And while the use for the three residential units would be preferable under Article 53, the inclusion of the laundromat, which serves a broader neighborhood, would continue a nonconformity. So, we do require relief for that proposed use. As you can see from the photos, this is a corner condition where the structure is located at the corner of Cheltenham and Marion Street. And we are proposing a vertical addition with no roof deck. And that would accommodate the third proposed unit that we're seeing. The laundromat pretty much occupies the lower level as well as a portion of the basement level. That will remain. We will reprogram the two existing units, which are currently three-bedroom, one bath. And then the addition of the third unit would also be a three-bedroom, one bath. This is currently operated as a rental project. It will continue as rental with that additional unit being added.
So, hold on, hold on, Counselor. So, the... How high is this going?
So, the total height of the building is 44 feet and the allowable height limit is 35. It presently probably sits at about 33 feet based upon the current conditions. There is an existing headhouse on the building. Obviously, that would be removed in exchange for the additional level. We are not proposing any of the roof deck above the fourth level. And we certainly received a good response from the neighborhood as well as the director of others, especially because we are keeping the laundromat at the lower level. And this will also involve a substantial improvement to the exterior of the building. I know we...
Counselor, let me just ask you. So, you cited the roof structure restrictions. Did you at some point have a deck up there?
We did not, but I... My understanding of Article 53 is the rooftop restrictions would be triggered on any expansion of the existing building above the current roof line.
Okay, so hold on. How were the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings, okay.
Any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, this proposal received strong support from the Abares and from Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on the record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve with design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Much thank you. Calling the next case, calling BOA 1130385, 33 to 35 Maverick Square. This is a change of occupancy from a laundromat with four residential units to retail office with five residential units. The violation is Article 53, Section 12, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 27H-5 is in the East Boston iPod. And Article 53, Section 56, insufficient parking for additional unit. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, members of the Board. Attorney Laurence Catino with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, Suite 110 in East Boston. Here today on 3335 Maverick Square. Very quickly, this is actually a proposal to make the building jacket meet what is currently there that has been there since the 90s in doing some work. My client realized that the building jacket did not meet what's inside the actual building. So, there hasn't been a laundromat there in quite some time. It's actually a jewelry store on the retail level. And there are five units. Unit 1 is a 465 square foot studio. Unit 2 is a 417 square foot studio. Unit 3, 472 square foot studio. Unit 4, 472 square foot, one bed. And Unit 5 is a 458 square foot, one bedroom. There'll be no change to the footprint of the building. This would all be done internally.
Counselor, Counselor, could you hold on for a second?
Sure.
I just want to make sure. How would these conversions... How did these conversions happen of the residential space from four residential to five residential units? Were they done without permit or what happened? Please, tell us.
I can't speak to the past. When my client purchased the property in 1998, this is how he purchased the property. So, it does appear that, you know, a CEO never issued for how the building was. So, I can only speak to as... From when my client has now had it.
And has taxes been paid as a five or as a four?
I don't know off the top of my head on that.
Okay, there... Is there anything in... Is the applicant on? Can he speak or she speak?
The applicant is on Anthony Jackaloni. If they could unmute him.
He said Jack Mahoney? I don't see that name.
Counselor, what's the name again? Sorry?
He just informed me he has been paying them as a five.
He has been paying as a five. Okay. How were the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, they're, I would say, not sufficiently informative because if you're going from affordable five, then there ought to be existing versus proposed. And it's only proposed. I don't see how... I mean, it sounds like it's a question of legalizing. I can't quite figure this out.
That's exactly what the applicant is requesting, is to legalize the units. However, I just want to make sure that you are comfortable with the sizes of the units.
They're very small. I mean, they're all very small. They're all, you know, they're 450 to 500. At least the ones where there's measurement shown. So, it's a series of small studio units.
Okay. I noticed the one that we have on the first floor plan, there is no... There is no... Must be a studio which has a sleeping dock. Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the applicant addressed most of the concerns of the Abares and this proposal received support from the Abares and from Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on the record in support of this proposal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi, Georgia's office. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve. I think basically given that these are existing conditions.
I'll second that, Joe.
I too... Anybody in opposition? May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
A second. All those in favor, forgive me. Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
We just started, Madam Chair.
I was wondering...
Calling the next case, calling BOA 105-3851, 92 Bennington Street. This is to build a new roof deck for the exclusive unit of Unit 3. The violation is Article 27T, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restriction. The open roof deck shall be accessed by a roof hatch. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street, Boston, Attorney for the applicant. This is an amendment to a long-form permit that was issued to renovate the three units in this building as of right. And no zoning relief was required from that renovation. The matter before you is on an amendment permit solely for roof deck...
Well, they're going to do it...
196.
Virtual... What do we...
I'm sorry, there's background noise.
Can we mute Karen Foley, please? I did.
What's the size of the deck, please?
The roof deck, Madam Chair, is 196 square feet. And the two items...
Okay, hold on. And it's accessed by the roof hatch? Mr. Ehrlich, how were the plans?
Mr. Lacasse, the drawings show a headhouse. Why is there a headhouse in the drawings if it's going to be accessed by a hatch? Have we lost Mr. Lacasse?
Looks like we had... See him here?
We call it again.
Oh, what? No, Mark is... Yeah, he's having... Looks like he's having some issues with this. Just trying to get back in.
I'm the architect for this project. I can speak to it. Sorry, I just lost my internet connection. I'm back, sorry. I'm not sure where I cut out, but my internet cut out on me. I'm so sorry.
So, did you hear the question?
I did not.
Mr. Lacasse, I was... You said that this is a roof deck would be accessed by a hatch, but the drawings show a headhouse. So, I'm curious as to why there's a headhouse there.
No, I'm sorry. The access... The citation was for a hatch, but the proposal is to access the roof deck by the pre-existing headhouse that existed when my client purchased the building, as shown on the plans.
Now, I'm confused. In your initial presentation, you said it was going to be accessed by a hatch.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. Access through the pre-existing headhouse.
And what tells us that it's pre-existing? Because it's being rehab, right?
The building... The work in the building has already been done. The units are complete. This amendment permit was filed back in January and then got just caught in COVID. But the renovations were completed. The certificate of occupancy has been issued. The units have been sold. And my client, Megan Ayers, is on the line, as is Josh Smith, the architect. And they are both prepared to give testimony that the headhouse was existing when they purchased the building and prior to the renovations that were conducted.
So, again, I'm confused because the advertisement and the agenda says that it should be accessed by a hatch. Is that an error?
I think that relates to the violation comments on the refusal letter, Mr. Ehrlich. It says, "Open roof deck shall be accessed by roof hatch." That's the violation. And the conditional use permit that we seek under Article 53, Section 52 is to access the roof deck through the pre-existing headhouse.
So, I need verification that that headhouse was not put in during the reconstruction because we're seeing a couple of these pop up and we just want to ensure that we are sticking and the applicants understand that the headhouse is something that we will not support.
Understood. And Megan Ayers, if A.Y.R.E.S., Jessica Thomas, if you could unmute her.
Yes, I just unmuted myself. So, yes, I can attest to the fact that the headhouse was there. It was pre-existing when we purchased the property. We're not touching it. We're just, you know, seeking approval for the deck itself. But we're not touching the headhouse that was pre-existing.
And do you know if that headhouse was legal or was it just done without permit?
That I'm uncertain of when we purchased it.
And how long have you had the building for?
It has been about a year and a half now.
Okay.
Do you... Madam, I just got a question.
Go ahead.
I'm looking at like Google Earth pictures. Do you own 90 as well? Is that...
No.
Okay.
Nope.
You want to kind of do exactly what 90?
Exactly.
Because I'm looking, okay.
Any...
It was almost like a mirror image.
Okay, hold on. Any other questions from the Board? Is that...
I'm just a little surprised that... I mean, it's a three-story house and there's no elevator, so I'm just... And there had been no roof deck, so I'm just a little surprised there is a headhouse. But if it's there, it's there.
Yeah, because nobody is under oath, I suppose. We just have to...
I mean, I'm looking at the Google Earth image and the building... It looks like this headhouse has been there for a while.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Lena Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the process, this proposal received support from the Abares and Maverick Central Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Ricardo Patron from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The Counselor would also like to go on the record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I see no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case. Calling BOA 107-1304, 22 Paris Street. This is a change of occupancy to an existing two-family dwelling to a four-family dwelling and constructing new third-story rear addition, new rear porches, roof deck. The violation is Article 27T, Section 9.[1781.32] The violation is Article 2017, Section 9, this is in the East Boston I-Pod, Article 53, Section 8, basement apartment is forbidden. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 52, roof structure restrictions. And Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with an address of Ivan Beacon Street, presenting the petitioner, and we also have Adam Glassman is the architect on this project. This project, the description has changed, and I just wanted to go over that change from what was read into the record and the plans will reflect that, Mr. Ehrlich has. The proposal is to change the occupancy of the existing two-family residential dwelling to a three-family. We are also proposing to erect a rear addition to the third story, rear egress stairs and a roof deck and completely renovate the building as well. The previous proposal mentioned four units, it's now three. Just to go over the.
So how does it, how does it affect your violations, Counselor?
Yeah, Madam Chair, so we actually were able to remove MFR because that's a forbidden use in this area going down to a three. We also removed the basement apartment forbidden use violation, we're now just extending living space as well. We've also reduced the FAR violation in our process as well.
Okay, so tell us about the units, the square footage, and how this third unit is being accommodated?
Sure, so the basement, right now, that's the lower level of Unit One, that would house one bedroom and one bath, has a ceiling height of seven foot six. There would be a bedroom and office, both would have full egress windows into the, into window wells, and each unit would have their mechanicals inside the unit, so no common metal space. We would then go up to the first floor, together with the basement, that unit is eighteen hundred feet, that is a three-bedroom and three-bath unit, and that would have two means of egress on the first floor as well. The second floor has Unit Two, that's a three-bedroom, two-bath with rear egress stairs, that's a nine hundred and fifty square foot unit, and also mechanicals are inside that unit. The third floor, if you look at the photo of the building, the front of the building already has a top floor space, we're just adding to the rear of that infilling, that would be a three-bedroom, two-bath with rear egress stair at a thousand fifty square feet, and that would have seven foot seven ceiling height for that top floor. Then there would be an exclusive roof deck for that unit, accessed through an exclusive staircase that would go up to the top floors, there's no headhouse for that roof deck. And the roof deck is twenty-seven feet by fourteen fives, about three hundred and ninety square foot roof deck in the rear of the building. The violations, as was mentioned and changed, so additional lot area, we've got six hundred sixty-five square feet for the new unit, we'd need a thousand, so that's pre-existing. FAR existing is one point seven, we're proposing two point three, and what's allowed is one point oh. In height, we're existing because of the front of the building already goes up thirty-eight feet two inches, so we are slightly over from what's required of thirty-five feet. Open space, we have two hundred and seventy square feet per dwelling unit and three hundred is required. Side yard, it's attached, so that's zero, that's pre-existing violation. Our rear yard existing is nineteen feet, and with the rear egress stairs, we're going to twelve and a half feet, forty would be required, and we are not able to create any parking, but we're five minutes from Maverick T Station.
So, Counselor, if I'm, Colette, can you please roll back to the basement, the proposed plans? Am I reading these plans right, that that bedroom number three that's in the basement does not have a window well? Or does not have a window? Or is that finer, that small window in the rear is the only access to light?
So, the, there is gonna be egress window well for back bedroom and as well as the office, so on A1.1, there is where those two back spaces meet, you can see sort of where that, where the window wells will be, and those are gonna be thirty inches floor to cell.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, unfortunately, these are the only plans that I did, that were not made available for me to preview, so I'm looking at the plans at the same time as you are. Mr. Drago, the, the usual questions that we have about adding living space to basement, it's hard to tell, since I didn't get a chance to look at them, what the relationship is to grade and whether there's really adequate. What's the floor to, in the basement, what's the floor to grade height? And also, you did mention the, the window sill, but please go over all that again.
Okay, so there, in the basement, the ceiling height is seven foot six.
Yeah.
It, it, it does not have a walkout, but we have egress windows in the bedroom and in the office, so, and both of those were thirty inches, so the four-by-six floor to cell.
How far, how far, how far is the floor of the basement below grade?
Don't know, we have the architect on, Adam Glassman, he may be better able to.
I mean, this, this is a problem we are seeing over and over and over and over again, which is basements that were intended, that are dark and below grade, that are intended for storage are now being repurposed for a living space, and that's not what they were intended for, nor should that what they be. It's one thing to have a playroom in there, but, or even an office, but to have a bedroom just doesn't make any sense, but, but I can't tell because I don't have the plans in front of me.
You know, I, I, just, Mr. Glassman and Counselor, can you guys make sure, because, Jeff, we're seeing so many of these basements in East D that just don't make sense. We are not trying to move back to those overcrowded days of, of, of years gone by, and this is just exactly what's happening, is this, is this space that's not calm and welcoming. And Mr. Ehrlich and the rest of the board members, we can approve the project, but eliminate that bedroom in the basement.
I still, I still like an answer on what the, the height is from the basement floor to grade.
So, the architect is on, I don't know if Adam Glassman, if he's muted.
Adam, please, please hustle and tell us the information, please.
I don't see Adam Glassman, but I see Adam Gaffin.
He's on the phone, he's not, he wasn't able to get on the computer, but I know he's on the phone.
Don't see the hand this time. Can you raise your hand? Oh, hold on. Yeah, no.
I also know, just so you know, we did have a, this was proposed a while back as a full basement unit, we removed.
You know, Counselor, Counselor, we understand all process, blah, 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 blah. You know, this is the, the, the place where decisions get made.
All right, I have unmuted caller seven seven seven, is that you, Adam? I see a hand raised.
Hello? Hello?
Lady, no, we need somebody else.
Okay, I don't see any other hand, I'm not sure if he's still, he's on the call. Adam, if you're on the call, can you raise your hand by pressing star three?
In the meantime, Ms. Ambassador, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go in support of this proposal during the community process. The applicant warned the abuders and addressed most of their concerns. This proposal also receives support from Maverick Neighborhood Central Association, and we receive support from the abuders, thank you.
Yeah.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
And Adam, are you calling from four one two? You've been unmuted, is that you?
Yes, that's me, I'm sorry about that. So, the, the average grade is two feet below the first floor, and the basement floor is about five and a half feet below average grade. Now, this does not include the enormous window well that we have in the back that provides escape egress for both the bedroom and the office.
Madam Chair, I, I mean, technically with the window wells, it is code compliant, but that five feet below grade is, is, I don't think what we're looking for.
Yep, in the meantime, Ms. Ambassador, any other raised hands?
I see no other raised hands.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have letters of support and letters of opposition.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, with two providers, BPDA design review in one and second, that there be no bedrooms in the basement.
I'll second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1098399, 41 Mount Vernon Street. This is to renovate the existing three-family, extend living space into the basement, new second-floor bay window, construct a rear addition and deck at the third level and erect a roof deck. The violation is Article 62, Section 25, Roof Structure Restrictions, and Article 62, Section 8, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is a proposal for a renovation of an existing three-family dwelling at 41 Mount Vernon Street in Charlestown. Being proposed here is an extension of living space into the basement, which I will of course address, a new second-floor bay window and construction of a rear addition on the third-floor level of the building with a deck at the rear of that for the use of the unit below and then a roof deck for the use of Unit Three. The plans that are showing on the screen now are revised plans, and to answer an anticipated question from the board, the revised plans do eliminate one of the recited zoning code violations. The violation, the setback violation is removed. The setback violation owed to the proposed third-floor addition, it was slightly violative of the code, redesign of the plan eliminated that violation, leaving two violations, roof structure restrictions related to the, the decks and an FAR violation. This is Article 62, it's a 3F 2000 zoning district, the maximum FAR here is two point zero with the addition and extension of living space, the FAR of the proposed renovation is approximately two point one eight, or about four hundred square feet over maximum allowed. Madam Chair, it's currently three units in the building, the building, the first unit is a two-bedroom unit, there's a, unit two is.
Counselor, can you hold on for a second? Colette, can you please go to the proposed basement and first floor, proposed? Is this existing? This is existing.
That's existing, correct.
Yeah, can we get proposed, please? Go ahead, Counselor.
Sure, would you like, actually, I, it was, it was just an issue, would you like me actually to start with the, with the basement as proposed? Because that'll just continue, I know there was just a conversation about basement, living space and bedrooms.
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, in this one, right, on, on Sheet A1, since, since an expansion into the basement is being proposed, it is showing as two bedrooms down there. The rear bedroom was actually intended as, I think, a study and should be a study, my, my client would certainly change that from a bedroom. Floor-to-ceiling height down there is eight feet. The front bedroom has, has an egress window, that's on the Mount Vernon Street side of the building, and it does benefit from light because there is sort of a patio area on that side of the building and, and, you know, there would be natural light there. If, if we could scroll down, which might help the board and Mr. Ehrlich, Sheet A4 will also address visually questions that the board might have about the, it's a cross-section of the building that shows the basement level and its relationship to grade, so that the board can see the, you know, the existence that there have a bulkhead to the basement and area way of.
Counselor, I don't think we go quite as far, we are at A, what, what, what sheet are we on?
Yeah, we only have the A three.
There is no A four? Did you mean A two?
We have, we have elevations that show, A1, A2, and A3 show elevations in relation to grade. The basement is significantly below grade.
Significantly, okay.
So, understanding the previous conversations about, about bedrooms, you know, my client is certainly willing to abide by whatever, whatever the board might decide with respect to that, and that is, that is the violation, the FAR, and then the decks, and just very briefly on the decks, the roof deck is approximately nine feet ten inches by twenty feet nine inches, accessed by hatch, and then the third-floor deck is smaller, that's about twelve feet by thirteen feet, that is also accessed by hatch.
Okay. Any questions from the board? How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Drums, what Mr. Marancy described, hatch access to the roof deck, which is fine, and the basement is well below grade and should not have any bedroom, but they currently do, and if we, if we approve it, we should eliminate that.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Quinlan Locke with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, like to go on record in support of this proposal. The abuders meeting was held back in July, July 30th, attended by many neighbors in the area. While we are supporting, we do wanna make sure that the board is aware there is opposition at the neighbors next door from 39, specific to the addition of the third floor and the roof decks.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support of this proposal and would ask that the proponent continue to work with the abuders on their concerns.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have two raised hands.
Okay, let's go for it.
Madam Chair, before that, the secretary here, we have numerous letters of support and numerous letters of opposition as well.
Uh-oh, sounds like fun for us, okay. So let's go ahead and here for the abuders, please.
Anna, you've been unmuted, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. I'm Anie Asalian, I'm a direct abutter, I live at 39 Mount Vernon Street, Unit Three. So this is a two-floor unit, and it's been my home for more than twenty years. I have three brief points and then I'll stop. The first point is the applicant doesn't meet any of the legal requirements under Section 7-3 of the zoning code to obtain these variances. This house has operated as a residential three-family for many years, so there are no special circumstances or conditions that this property require by the code to approve this.
Sorry, may I just ask, is your, what is your opposition based on? Is it based on the roof decks or is it the rear addition?
The rear addition, I'd like to make, this is probably my next point, is that the rear, the rear addition and the roof deck, the rear addition, it puts my home in a shadow for a substantial part of the day, and I'm gonna lose a lot of fresh air and light, and where I have open views outside some of my den windows, I'm gonna be looking at a wall. So, I've submitted a sunlight and shadow study that's in your packet, and it was done by an intern architect at Elka Smanfredi, and if you have a moment, I realize time is tight, but there's exhibits, Exhibit One, it shows how the expansion basically blocks all the light coming into my den, my living room, my kitchen areas. I work from home, I'm self-employed, I've been working from home for fifteen years. This is gonna really detract from the quality of my life and my living conditions and how I work. As I shared, my, in Exhibit Two, you're gonna see that the rear story completely blocks anything looking out of my den windows, so instead of seeing a skyline and trees, I'm looking at a solid wall, you know, six feet away.
Thank you.
All right, I have another, I have two other raised hands.
Okay, let's go for it.
Okay. Hi Judith, you've been unmuted.
Good morning, my name is Judith McDonough and I live up the street at 28 Mount Vernon Street, and I am opposed to the expansions at the roof level. I did submit a letter for the November 10th hearing, and my, my objection is, we have the Charlestown Design Overlay District, and this neighborhood is in it, and I find it objectionable that variances have been creeping on to extend the property and as.
So, hold on, hold on, let me just ask you, your objection is based on the rear addition? So, hold on, hold on. Let me just ask you, your objection is based on the rear addition or the decks?
Both.
On both, thank you. May I have somebody, another person, please?
Okay, yep. I have, I have been, Kevin Finnegan, you've been unmuted.
Thank you. I live at 26 Mount Vernon Street with my wife, Margaret. We've been here for 17 years. We sent a detailed letter to you why we oppose this. I hope you have it in front of you. Maybe you don't. I especially am sympathetic to Anie Azarian's problem. It seems to me this comes down to a choice between whether a developer who never intends to live at this property can maximize his profit by putting an addition and decks on that block her view and wind up with her having a diminution in the value of her property and a diminution in the use and enjoyment of her property. That's the decision that has to be made here, and it seems terribly unfair, especially in light of the high hurdle that 48 imposes on these variances. I mean, this building is like every other building on the street in the neighborhood. It's no different than them.
Thank you, Mr. Finnegan, thank you. May I hear from caller, from a caller?
Okay, sure, yep. Don't see a caller.
Okay. Okay, so given that information, may I have, is there a response, Ms. Counselor?
Yes, there is, Madam Chair. Thank you. George Maransy speaking. Madam Chair, I just wish to point out that the, there's opposition to the third-floor addition, but it is, in fact, dimensionally compliant. It meets all setbacks requirement. There's no height violation. The third-floor setback gives an opportunity to...
Sorry, Counselor. Counselor, does it meet the side yard requirement?
Yes, that, that violation is eliminated. I have an updated refusal letter that was issued yesterday by Darrell Boyd, which cites only FAR, which can be attributable to the expansion into the basement, and roof structure restrictions, which is not a variance standard. It's a conditional use permit. But the top-floor unit in this case, the entire unit is currently less than 30 feet by 20 feet. It is an undersized unit by almost anyone's standards. And this is a case where a zoning compliant, dimensionally compliant addition on the third floor gives the opportunity to turn that undersized unit into a 915-square-foot one-bedroom unit. It meets all setback requirements.
I think you appreciate the position we're in, where we have somebody who has a home office and, and will potentially suffer the consequences of, of this addition.
Of, of an addition that's dimensionally compliant? I, I don't think it, it would send a good message for the board to deny an addition that meets the dimensional setback requirements because there's opposition. I mean, in that case, then, then, I mean, you know, the board should be limited to look at what zoning relief here is being requested. There's an FAR variance that we're seeking. That could easily be made into a conforming use with respect to eliminating space in the basement. My client would like to have some space in the basement, but that addition is essentially zoning compliant, and it's not popular, but we're not seeking relief for the addition.
Okay, thank you. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve with BPA designer review. I'm not happy about the, the expansion, but...
But the counsel is right, but may I ask, Mr. Ehrlich, how about elimination of bedrooms in the basement?
Yes, yes, no, there was going to be two provisos again. I mean, the counsel is correct. Unfortunately, it's zoning compliant, even if it's not an attractive option for the, for the neighbors, so we really can't speak to that. So with BPD, so my motion would be to approve BPA design review and no bedrooms in the basement.
Is there a, is there a second, a second to this?
I'll second that, Madam Chair, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos. Thank you.
Following the next case, calling BOA 976-349-1921, Milk Street. Change of occupancy, medical, I want to use cannabis establishment, medical and adult recreation. Mount Victoria finished upgrades. Violation is Article 38, Section 18, Cannabis Establishment, Medical and Adult Recreation. Name and address for the record, please.
Lawrence Estacara, I'm a lawyer at 10 Coast Office Square, and I'm here on behalf of Patriot Care, which is a medical dispensary pursuant to a permit issued by the board some years ago, and now thinks to locate a recreational dispensary at the same location.
Okay, Counselor, can you, so we remember this case quite clearly. I'd like you, Ms. Ambassador, can you mute her about it? I don't know where the experience is coming from. Okay, Counselor, you can please respond and describe how both uses are going to be accommodated on site?
Yes, and Mr. Mayerson, who is, represents Patriot Care, is also on the line. They will be entering the premises from separate doors. They will be serviced differently, and that's how, because there's a door on the side as well as a door on the front, and that's how we'll be able to accommodate both of them. And this has been approved by the cannabis...
So, Counselor, well, I, I'm interested in the detailed project. Currently accessed is from Milk Street. Is that going to continue for medical? And how is the access, and how is access for recreation going to be accommodated?
It's going to be from the Holly Street entrance.
And will there, and no, no, is there a strategy for accommodating lines or demand?
Yes, there are. There are conditions imposed by the Boston Cannabis Board. The conditions are very clear. There's also a mitigation agreement with the downtown bid. It will be by appointment only and for at least the first six months, so there will be staggered visitations. The medical use has been there for above five years. There's never been a problem with lines whatsoever.
Yes, we understand that, but they are moving that recreational, that, through other, other issues, other issues. And what are the hours of operation?
The hours of operation are 9 o'clock, I'm going to 8 o'clock at night.
Seven days a week?
Seven days a week, opening much la, less on a Sunday.
And this is for both, my, medical and adult?
Yes.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay.
Counselor, one more question. Any, any questions from the board? Counselor?
Madam Chair, let me know what the parking situation is. It's, it's a liberal address.
Yes, go ahead.
Sure, the, the traffic study has been submitted to the board, I believe it was last Friday. It showed that 85% of the people who are customers are already downtown or are traveling on public transportation. This is certainly is a bogus, transport-oriented location as one can get, being within steps of the Blue Line, Orange Line station, by the Old South Meeting House. Addition of the traffic study identifies over 1,000 parking spaces within walking distance, the Pylee Garage being very close. So we believe that that's not an issue. It has not been an issue at all when we've had the medical issue.
What is the impact of the, what is the impact of the expansion of the use to recreational with respect to deliveries?
That, Bob, you want to get the specifics on deliveries? Can you recognize Mr. Mayerson, Jessica?
What was the name, Robert?
Robert Mayerson, M-A-Y-E-R-S-O-N. I know he's on the call.
Yeah. Okay, yep, there he goes. Are you been unmuted?
Thank you, thank you. The question was, was about delivery. So on the medical side, we, we do, are required by the city to offer delivery. We don't, we don't do any delivery out of the Milk Street location, however. We bring, any deliveries are made from our other locations. We told you aside, there is... Mr. Mayerson, that's not my question. My question is delivery of product to the location. How is that, is the cadence increased and the method, methodology with respect to delivery increased in light of the expansion to recreational? I, I apologize. I thought you were talking about outbound. So the methodology is exactly the same. There, there, it's possible there could be, you know, slightly greater frequency. I think we go currently two times a week. And, you know, I can get into the exact details on how we handle it, but that could, that could increase by another day or, you know, another delivery or two, but it's, it's handled with the same process where we are required to follow certain security protocols and track the vehicle and, and so on and call, you know, there's, there's a lot of protocols involved with it, which I can get into if you want, but we would be following everything the same way that we currently do medical, because it's coming from the same facility.
Okay, and then finally, that bottom space was supposed to go out to retail or art uses in the basement? It's not entirely a basement. Is there, is there any proposal to expand into that space for this use?
Well, the, I'll answer that, Larry. So the downstairs space, originally when we were medical, we were, we, we had a subtenant there that was a community group or a nonprofit, I should say. The intent is to utilize the space that you see downstairs from the, from the window. There is, we do currently have operations in the back of that space that we will be tying into. I mean, we already use it as a, as a lounge for employees, a, a training area, and a vault room downstairs. So the space that we had built out will be utilized for adult use downstairs, to have additional adult use stations downstairs if needed.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Lisa High with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We held an abutters meeting on September 4, 2019. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record to support. They have received support from the Downtown Boston Bid as well as the Downtown Boston Residents Association. The support is based on community experience and how the proponent has conducted business in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Salvo Ana Calderon from Counselor Fink's office. The Counselor would like to go on record in support due to their history of engagement and being responsible in the district. They have worked collaboratively with Boston Police and the City of Boston. They also have numerous community meetings with the downtown bid and have their support as well. Counselor Fink supports us. The team has always been professional and responsive to any neighbors' concerns or issues. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Madam Chair and members of the board, my name is Nat Shidley. I'm president of Revolutionary Spaces, which owns and operates the Old South Meeting House directly across the street from this location. We strongly support increasing commerce and pedestrian activity in the neighborhood, and Patriot Care has demonstrated itself to be a really great neighbor. They have a strong track record of supporting Boston nonprofits like ours, and specifically, we've partnered with them over the past year to, to create inclusive cultural programming for residents of Boston.
So, so thank you. I, I understand the quote "community benefits", but I'm, we're looking at it from a, from an entirely use perspective. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have numerous letters of support.
May I hear from the BPA?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hampton, BPA, we're on record in supporting this. Is, you know, we often have these discussions, we like this to, you know, be applicable to this appellant only, and everything else is pretty much state-required at this point, but we are on the record in supporting.
Do you need design review for any exterior work?
No, I don't, no, I don't think so, Madam Chair.
Okay, so given this information, may I have a motion, please?
I'd make a motion to approve.
To this position only? Okay, thank you.
Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, Ligon supposes.
Okay, thank you.
Following the next case, calling BOA 109-2298-120 Salem Street. This is a great residential unit and two commercial spaces. A change of occupancy to nine residential units to one commercial space. Violation Article 54, Section 13, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 54, Section 12, the residential use located on the first story is conditional. And Article 54, Section 21, our street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Daniel Toscano with an address at 1 State Street, Suite 1500, Boston, Mass. 02109. I represent Rafi Properties, who owns the property at 120 Salem Street. It's owned the property for a number of years, Madam Chair, and we're really just correcting the certificate of occupancy. The existing conditions actually have eight resident, I'm sorry, nine residential units and one commercial space, Madam Chair. There has never been two commercial spaces at this particular location, so really just correcting the certificate of occupancy. As my client recently became aware, the certificate of occupancy back in 2002 had eight residential units and two commercial spaces, but there has always been nine residential units and one commercial space.
So, Counselor, let me, Counselor, and let me just ask you a question. Which, tell us which unit, tell us the, the square footage and the breakdown of each of the units. And also tell us if taxes have been paid as nine residential and one commercial.
To answer the taxes, yes, have been always paid for nine residential and one commercial space. The units going through, Unit 1 is actually 543 square feet of space, two-bedroom. Units 3, 5, 7, and 9 are all identical at 615 square feet, two-bedroom units, one bath. And Units 2, 4, 6, and 8, 643 square feet, all identical, two-bedroom, one bath. And they've been existing for as long as I can remember, and I'm a lifelong resident in the neighborhood. There's never been two commercial spots at this particular location. I can go over the zoning code violations for...
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
There's, there's no work to be done. Correct, Mr. Toscano?
Correct. There is no work to be done. These have been existing.
Yep.
And there's no base, is there any basement living?
There is no basement living.
Okay, is any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and we'd like to go on record in support of this project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on the record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor at Ivy George's office, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have one letter of support, North End.
Madam Chair, we have no...
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Second, Ligon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Following the next case, calling BOA 106-5617, 230 to 238 Hanover Street. This is off-street parking for residential vehicles, 15 max. Violation Article 54, Section 21, off-street parking loading. Article 6, Section 3A, additional condition and restricted parking district. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of board, thank you again. Attorney Dan Toscano with an office address of 1 State Street, Suite 1500, Boston, Mass. 02109. I represent the owner of the property, Mateo Gallo, who is now asking for your support to approve this parking plan at 230, 238 Hanover Street. This is an existing park... This is an existing parking area. It's always been used as an allowable use. Mr. Gallo owns the properties, like I said, from 230 to 238. Those are residential buildings. They've always been an allowable use as an accessory to the parking. However, he now rents out some of the parking to some of the residents and some of the local business owners who come in during the day. So now we have to change the use of it to parking lots for, you know, no more than 15 parking spaces, Madam Chair. So in regards to the violation, we do have a maneuverability violation. As you can see, the tandem parking in the back, this is over 7,000 square foot lot. There's a maneuverability issue. But I can say that the majority of the parking is done during the day. And once the parking people are there parked, that their business owners are working in the businesses, they're there for the day. So this creates no traffic issues for the neighborhood that comes out on a Hanover Street. It creates no nuisance to any of the owners or pedestrians. And so there's really no issues there. So once they're parked, they're usually there for the day. And most of the spots are almost empty during the night. In regards to Article 6, Section 3A, I spoke with the City of Boston in regards to the parking. I think because this is residential parking, it doesn't qualify for that we would, this is an exempt from the parking freeze that is issued by the City of Boston. So we would not need any approval from the, was it the air pollution?
So, Counselor, a couple of questions. One, are there bedroom windows or residential units right over the spaces? And two, is North Hanover Court a private way?
It's, well, Mr. Gallo owns, yes, he owns half of it. So the half to the right, which is about six feet, eight inches, and the other half is owned by another property owner. So it is private. So, and it will be paved, Mr. Gallo will be paving the existing conditions and adding some drainage pursuant to conversations with the building department. Also, in answer to your second questions, the back of the property, you see the one-story, that's the restaurant. It's a one-story restaurant, so there are no windows. It's just a second means of egress. So we added a three-foot walkway, as you can see, which will be put there with some ballast, so no cost to park there. And in the back with all those tandem parking, there's no windows. It's just brick walls, cement walls.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Couple of questions. The Chair asked about North Hanover Court. Is there an easement for use of the, as a driveway?
There is, and there's an easement. It's second means of egress for one of the restaurants that's on Salem Street, which we will not be, you'll see, there's a sign that says concrete block wall. Right after that, there's a doorway for a second means of egress. We will not be blocking that. It's not even on, it's not on our property, but yes.
I'm asking about an easement with a neighbor so that the whole driveway can be used. Is that recorded?
I believe there is, Mr. Ehrlich. I believe there is. Prior attorney did address this issue with, I think, Neil Janowitz. But I haven't, but I believe there is an easement.
Well, please, please find out. That's one question. The other is, on the tandem parking, is there an attendant there? How do, you've got nine cars, the three are potentially blocking. How do they maneuver in and out?
Right. So there's no attendant. So this is why this is an exempt from the commercial parking space, because it's not for public parking that people can come in and out. These are monthly parking spaces. Usually, they're, the majority of the spaces that are rented in the back there, people that work at the local businesses. And once they're in there during the day, they're pretty much in there and they really regulate themselves if someone needs to really get in and out, if there's someone being blocked.
So if someone, so if someone's parked for the day in the back, they have to go find the person, the other two cars in the front to move?
Yes, yes. So they're pretty familiar. This has been operated like that for quite some time. They're pretty familiar who parks there, and it's usually done a number of the spaces. Like I said, they're all by local businesses renting the area.
Thank you. Is anybody, any question from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, Secretary here, speaking on behalf of Bob D'Amico from BTD. He believes that 230, 238 Hanover Street should only be approved in nine spaces. Harbor Court is only 13 feet in width, making maneuverability extremely difficult, if not impossible. And also, all the spaces are too small and do not meet BTD.
Okay, thank you. Is anybody here to speak in support?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is John Armando from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to go on record and support the project.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ricardo Patrón from the Office of City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi George's office, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have a handful of letters of support.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
Thank you. So given this information from Bob D'Amico, and, you know, to understand that this is to relieve on-street parking pressure for business owners, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'm going to make a motion to approve at Devoe.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling a next case, calling BOA 110-7090, 311 to 319 Summer Street. This is, this is a med spa clinic. There's occupancy and use in this space. The violation Article 8, Section 7. Use is conditional. Med spa clinic is a conditional use in the zoning sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Johanna Schneider with a business address of 75 State Street in Boston. I'm here with Gabriela Verodakis from Sweet Six Medical Aesthetics. We are seeking a conditional use permit to operate a medical aesthetic spa at 311 Summer Street. This med spa is licensed by the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. It employs licensed medical doctors, nurse practitioners, and registered nurses, and it follows a rigorous health and safety protocol. That will be providing medical aesthetics treatments such as Botox, laser hair removal, and dermal fillers, as well as aesthetic services such as facials, eyelash extensions, and face and body waxing. It will also have an onsite skincare retail boutique.
So, hold on. So please tell us how many booths, how many, and the hours of operation, please?
Sure. The premises overall is 2,500 square feet. There will be five private treatment rooms. We anticipate having approximately 20 patients per day. There will be approximately 13 employees in the space. The hours of operation will be Monday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay. And is this ground floor use?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay. And what was the previous use in this space?
I believe it was some sort of office or retail use to the ground floor of an office building that is currently occupied by a large architecture firm, and it's been vacant for some time. So this is a good way to revitalize this space.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawing is straightforward. I guess my only question is to the applicant, are you assuming that, are you making provisions for the COVID area or era? Or are you assuming that this will go into operation once things are improved?
If Gabriela Verodakis could be unmuted, she can answer that. I can also answer that they already do have a strict COVID protocol in place, including temperature testing on clients upon arrival, using adequate PPE, and using decals on the floor to indicate distances and plexiglass in between different public spaces.
Hi, Gabriela, you've been unmuted.
Yes, that's correct. We are taking all precautions and using all PPE equipment. All my staff has been educated and trained in proper protection through this COVID pandemic.
And is this, sorry, is this your only facility?
No, I have one in Newburyport. And we are following very strict regulations, state regulations in COVID, COVID-19.
Gabriela, can you hold on, please? Any other questions from the board? Joe, did you have a question?
No.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support as Councilor Flynn met with the proponent and believes that this will be a welcome and responsible business additions to the community. It is also Councilor Flynn's view that it is critical to do all we can to support women and minority-owned businesses who have been heavily impacted to the economic fallout caused by COVID-19. In addition, the proponent has the support of the neighbors from the Four Point Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi George's office, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have just a couple of letters of support.
Thank you.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve.
Miss Ambassador, anybody else?
Jessica, you're muted.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Minor Perez with the Carpenter Center. Want to go on record in support?
Thank you.
Yep, sorry, Madam Chair. I have one caller whose hand has been raised, but I'm not sure. I've just unmuted you, caller 307. Yep, okay. Nope, they put their hand down. Sorry, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Does BPDA need review for signage or anything?
I mean, it's one of those things. Well, I see you'll kick the signage to us anyway. If you want to make it part of the record, you can.
Yeah. Motion to approve of BPDA design review for signage.
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling a last case for 9:30, calling BOA 111-8789, 14 to 16 West Broadway. This is a build-out of an existing shell space for a new bank. Violation Article 68, Section 7, bank use is a conditional use in the zoning sub-district. And Articles 68, Section 33, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Marancy. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, this is an application to convert existing shell space in the building at 14 West Broadway, ground floor space into a bank use. My client is Harbor One Bank. Joining us in this meeting is David Tidwell, who's Vice President of Corporate Services for Harbor One. The branch would be approximately 1,540 square feet. It's located in an MFRLS multi-family residential local service sub-district on West Broadway in South Boston, which is somewhat curiously a location that requires zoning relief, in this case in the form of a conditional use permit for a bank. There are, you know, anyone who's familiar with West Broadway, it is a main commercial thoroughfare of South Boston. There are many banks on both West Broadway and East Broadway. The relief thing started with a conditional use permit and relief for the complete inability to provide parking for the use.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Plans are okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ana Calderon from Councilor Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support due to feedback from the West Broadway Neighborhood Association, who reported no issues. At the same time, Councilor Flynn will also like to ensure that there are no outstanding issues in terms of protection, safety, accessibility for persons with disabilities, and ADA compliance and access, as there have challenges in the past that the city has had to work with that they went over to correct. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor of Savi George's office, would like to go on record in support and echo the sentiments of Councilor Flynn. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve with divine review of signage. Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is now 10:55. Our next set of cases is at 12:30. The board is now adjourned until then. In the meantime, any applicants requesting deferral or withdrawal, please let Miss Ambassador know about your request. So we will reconvene 12:30 on the dot. Thank you. June, the Board of Appeal for December 8th is back in session. Mr. Fort, just let me take a roll call. Is Mr. Fortune here?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Ehrlich.
I'm here.
For you?
Did you say me? You cut off.
Just, just, just checking in. Mr. Ligris?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon. Mr. Kandell? Mr. Devoe?
Present.
Thank you. Jeff, are you on? Just, Mr. Hampton?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
And Mr. Kandell, when you're on, is just one more check. Are you on? Miss Ambassador, please let me know when Mr. Kandell is back on, because I know sometimes he has problems with audio.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, let's, let's go ahead, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the 1230s. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals? Could you please give me the address for us?
69 Reedville Street.
For the record. Calling BOA 112-719-69, Reedville Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small. This is Jeff of the Department of Public Safety. We're here today seeking a deferral on this matter, suspending the program.
Is there a reason, Mr. Small? Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please?
We have a date of March 23rd at 12:30.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day.
See you in the new year.
Yes. Happy holidays to everyone.
True.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals?
32 Brent Street.
I'm sorry. Say that address again? 32 Brent?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 105-4245, 32 Brent Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Patrick Mahoney with the business address of 160 Federal Street.
Are you requesting a deferral, Mr. Mahoney?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm seeking a deferral. After the community process concluded, we did receive an additional petition request. We are going to comply with and then have another meeting.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Mr. Tekin?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of March 23rd at 12:30.
Thank you. See you, Counselor, in the new year.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please.
Yes. 16 and 21 Tanglewood Road, companion cases.
For the record, calling BOA 107-2612, 16 Tanglewood Road. There are two companion cases, BOA 107-2609, 16 Tanglewood Road, and BOA 107-2607, 21 Tanglewood Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Alex Benelli with the business address of 10 Forbes Road, Brentwood, Massachusetts.
Tell us why you're requesting a deferral, Alex.
Good morning, Madam-- or good afternoon, rather, Madam Chair, members of the board. We began the community process, reaching out to the Lower Mill Civic Association back in August. We were in front of the E-Board and then had two follow-up abudders meetings, briefed the E-Board on the results of those abudders meetings and the outreach to the community. They asked us to defer to go in front of their membership there, reconvening again in January. So they just asked us for a deferral to update the association.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date.
I'm sorry, March 23rd at 12:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? Address, please. Case, and I'm going to call it in for the record here. And I'll explain the next one after, but for the record, case BOA 944-854-36000 Circle. We have a letter of withdrawal, so may I make the most of it, no ill or prejudice?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Harry? Hi, talk.
Hello? Mr. McCarry, can you hear me?
Who is this?
Harry Mattel.
Okay, Harry, listen, Nealian Court, is that being withdrawn?
Yeah, but Madam Chair, what I want to explain, there's another case that, 36 Nealian Circle, that it's going to be heard.
Okay, and please, Mr. Fortune, can you put that number in the record, the BOA number?
I just did, Madam Chair.
And so it's the one that we will hear is 1113-797, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals? At 12:30.
What's your BOA number? Okay, we have a long agenda, so let's get cracking.
On the first case, calling BOA 109-6726, 83 Wyman Street. This is a renovation of an attic to accommodate an office and family room. Violation Article 55, Section 9. The floor area ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please put your name and address on the record and tell us what's being proposed.
Okay, my name is Yael Getshone. I'm the architect for the project. My address is 70 Hoyt Road in Belmont, MA 02478. My clients own this condo, which is part of a three condo association, and they have an existing attic which is unfinished, and they're trying to finish the attic into a playroom and an office without changing the mass of the house or, you know, the volume in any way.
And hold on, tell us how many square feet it is?
The addition, the finished attic.
The expansion, yes.
It's 374 gross square feet.
And this is a single-family?
No, it's a condo out of three condos.
Okay, so this is 375. And what's the floor-to-ceiling height?
Floor-to-ceiling height. Is it the attic, you mean? I need to check.
Yes, in the attic where they're proposing the expansion.
Yeah, hang on one second. I'll tell you.
Oh, like in the meantime, how are the plans?
The plans are okay, but it's pretty tight in terms of headroom. It's really only seven feet, which is for a single-family house.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
The height under the ridge is eight feet and 10 inches, but then it slopes down.
No, 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 but usable space. You've got living space with a height of seven feet.
But I keep the slope exposed, so I have a ridge in the middle and then it slopes down. So if you look at the sections for a second, can you roll down to the sections?
That's what I'm looking at, and it says seven-feet height line. I'm looking at, that's exactly what I'm looking at.
So, okay, so we just have to register that as an issue. However, this is partially used space? Is that what it is? Just an office and a family room?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, it's just storage.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. An abudders meeting was held on September 3rd, 2020, where the applicant addressed the abudders' questions and concerns. The applicant also received the support of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, so the mayor's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Sorry. Good afternoon, Chairwoman and members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Savi George's office, like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Jessica, Justin McClary from Mount O'Malley's office is muted. He'd like to speak.
Yes, please put your name and address on the record and tell us if you're in support or not.
Hi, thank you, Lindsay. Mr. McClary from City Council, Mount O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Jessica, any other hands?
No, ma'am.
No, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion for approval, but I'm on the proviso of no building code relief just in terms of the issue of height.
Thank you. Is there a--
Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 104-955-4304, Center Street. This is the removal proviso of the previous owner and change to the new owner's name. Violation's Article 6, Section 4. Change to the previous decision, the Board of Appeal. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just wanted to let you know, it does appear that Mr. Kandell is now on the call.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to test his audio to make sure that he can be heard.
Mr. Kandell, can you just give us a shout out?
Can you guys hear me? I second a few, but I got beat with a punch. I'm here.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Do I need to hear from the applicant's name and address for Center Street?
Yes.
Is anybody here for three or four Center Street?
Hold that one off, Madam Chair. We'll go to the next case.
Yep.
Calling BOA 104-108-624-Spalding Street. This is erected building for three family residences, one unit for affordable housing unit, one unit for owner-occupied accessible unit, and one three-bedroom unit. The violation's Article 8, Section 7. Three-family residential dwelling units forbidden use in the OSRC sub-district. Article 55, Section 40. Ostride parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9. Rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9. The height requirement is excessive. Three-story max, three and a half is proposed. Article 55, Section 9. The lot area of additional dwelling units insufficient. Article 55, Section 9. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9. The front yard setback is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9. The side yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9. The height requirement is excessive in feet. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Echol with Drago and Toscano with the business address of 11 Beacon. With me this afternoon is David and Tracy Steves, the owner. The owner's of 24 Spalding Street. David is also the project architect. As mentioned, the proposal is to erect a three-family building with two parking spaces. A very brief background, this lot was sold to the Steves by the Mass Department of Transportation approximately two years ago. And during that purchase process, since MassDOT was sponsoring the project, the Steves and MassDOT agreed to certain use restrictions, as was mentioned. One, the first floor, would be a fully accessible unit. It's also going to be owner-occupied. And the second restriction is that one of the units would be at 80% AMI, with the third unit being a market rate. So those are all recorded in the deed. It is a deed restriction. The zoning sub-district is technically open space recreational. This is based on the fact that it was formerly owned by MassDOT, clearly by the deed and discussion between MassDOT and the applicants. This is the kind of development that was proposed and contemplated when selling the property to a private citizen. The lot size is 5,000 square feet. Just to go through the violation very briefly. As I mentioned, the use, technically, are still in an open space zoning district, but we abut directly a 3F 5,000 sub-district. And all the other properties on the street are three-family dwellings. Lot area for dwelling unit, we need 2,000 per extra unit. We have 2,000 total. The floor air ratio allows 2.6. We're at 1.1, which is right around or below kind of the street average.
Matt, can you tell us what the abutting zoning district is?
Sure, it is. It's a 3F 5,000 directly to the left and across.
So it's a 3F 5,000. It looks like it's triple-deckers for the most part. Is that true?
That's correct, yes. We're carrying roofline of the other properties.
And then I think, you know, we understand the rest of it. Tell us about, this is new construction. Tell us about the off-street parking.
Sure, so it's new construction on a vacant lot. There are two proposed parking spaces. They are tandem. One of the spaces will accommodate a handicap accessibility. So as you can see, it's kind of on the bottom right here. The building juts out a little bit in the rear. So in the front, we have about a 14-foot clearance or so, so we can accommodate a handicap vehicle with a ramp. And then it does narrow a little bit to about 12 feet in the rear, so there'd be two parking spaces. One would be located on the first floor predominantly with an interior staircase to two bedrooms on the second floor. So the first floor itself would have a full ramp access and living quarters, including bedroom, one bedroom, a living room, and a kitchen. And then the second floor, which is had two bedrooms. The second floor, which is supposed to be the affordable unit at 80% AMI, would have two bedrooms and one bath, as well as a rear porch. And Unit 3, which is proposed to be market rate, would be a three-bedroom, two-bath, also with a porch. Without a pause and take any further questions from the board.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Plans are okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. An abudders meeting was held on February 13th, 2020. The applicant worked closely with neighbors to address concerns, and they have received the support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. So the mayor's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Council, Mount O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record in support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Counselor Savi George's office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have a handful of letters from support and some opposition.
Hi, Madam Chair, I have one raised hand.
Thank you. What's the opposition based on, Mr. Secretary?
Some are just opposed to the project. Some are opposed to the construction of the house on this lot.
Okay, okay. Ms. Testa, can you please put your name and address on the record and tell us if you're in support or in opposition?
Sure, my name is Jeannie Testa, and I live at 16 Rosemary. I'm a neighbor of the Steves' family, and I support them 100% in their intention to build a house. I think it's a great idea, especially they'll have a handicapped entrance to the house, which is perfect for their son who uses a wheelchair, so I'm 100%.
Thank you. Can I hear from Ms. Paris? Or Mr. Paris? Yes, please put your name and address on the record.
Hi, this is Curtis Perrin, 19 Kennelworth Street in Roxbury.
Yes, and are you speaking on Spalding Street?
No.
Okay, then hold off. Can I hear from Ms. Pang, please, Jessica, Ms. Ambassador?
Yes, one second. Okay. You've been unmuted? Go ahead.
Hello?
Hi.
Name and address on the record.
So I'm Siobhan Paris. I live on 39 Rosemary Street. I'm an abutter to the project. And while we have nothing against the project of building a house, we are in opposition to the project in its current form. In particular, the house does respect any of the setbacks and several other things. We have documented in our letter that affordable accessible units could be built slightly slower and reflect the setbacks. In particular, the setback along the property line with our property. Moves three feet to adjust, and we believe it's a small adjustment that can be done. If this were done, we were supportive of building a house.
Thank you. May I hear from Mr. Ms. Pang, please?
Yes, so, Ms. Pang is my wife, and she has the same concern.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
To approve of BPDA design review?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Calling the next case, calling BOA 113-1603, 124-126-Warren Street. This is to build a new four-story building of wood, steel, concrete, and a vacant lots at 124-126-Warren Street. Combine two lots into one lot to be 5,188 square feet, to be known as 124-126-Warren Street. The violation's Article 50, Section 43. Ostride parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 28. Office use is conditional. Article 50, Section 29. The floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29. The building height is excessive in feet. Article 50, Section 29. The front yard is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29. Side yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29. The rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Attorney Patrick Mahoney with the business address of 160 Federal Street.
Madam Chair, sorry. I'd like to recuse myself on this.
And who's this?
Joe.
Joe, so the juror is accusing himself. Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, the applicant's seeking to erect a four-story office building on this site. By way of background, this is a vacant lot, or rather, the two lots are vacant lots after a seven-alarm fire that occurred in 2014, prior to which time, from 1997 to 2014, it was Veterans Benefit Clearinghouse, which was a commercial use, and then prior to that, 1969 to 1997, it was the office of Roxbury Defenders. So as it sits as a vacant lot in the last six and a half years, my client is proposing to erect a four-story building with parking on the first level. As the secretary had mentioned, we are seeking relief for parking because it is just over 10,000 square feet of office space. 10 spaces would be required. However, we have provided eight spaces. And it's worth noting that previous users had no parking for the office space. The height violation, as in vertical distance above grade, has been eliminated. It is 45 feet is the allowed height for this use or for any other use, which would qualify as office.
So, Counselor, this is still four stories, right?
Yeah, four stories is allowed, Madam Chair, and the height is 45 feet in zoning sub-district.
Okay.
So we are therefore seeking relief for floor area ratio. The zoning sub-district is multifamily residential and local services, which has a floor-to-air ratio of 1. We are seeking to increase that to 2.2. Additionally, we are seeking relief if the side yard is--
Sorry, I did not hear. I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the request was for side yard?
The requirement for side yard is 10 feet, and we are seeking relief for five feet of that. And the litter yard requirement is 15 feet with the shallow lot exception. Without it, it is 20 feet, and we are seeking relief of that with this proposed side yard of five feet, as shown in this drawing above. This is a site survey, which is a good drawing to show the setbacks.
Okay, then tell us about the parking.
The parking is accessed on Winterford Street-- The parking is accessed on Winthrop Street, and it is by the center of the building. The building fronts on Warren Street, the corner of Winthrop. Parking will ingress and egress on Winthrop Street. And there is eight parking spaces, five full spaces, and three compact, or excuse me, four compact spaces, and four full spaces, as shown below, which are seven feet by 18 feet for the compact spaces, and eight and a half feet by 20 feet for the full-size spaces. Which is.
Okay, and so this is office, how many square feet of this is office?
It's approximately 10,500 square feet. We have a small office area on the first floor to activate Warren Street, so it isn't just a parking garage. And then on the floors two, three, and four, it is entirely office in each floor, including the elevator and stairs is approximately 3,557 square feet.
Okay, may I see, Collette, may I see a rendering of what this looks like? In the meantime, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, the drawings are, Mr. Mahoney, you've got a lot of stuff going on in the roof. You've got the elevator headhouse, mechanical room headhouse, and stairs headhouse. Is there some way that some of that could be combined to reduce the roofline?
Yes, Mr. Ehrlich, we could eliminate the stair headhouse to hatch, because it is four feet and there's no accessible, rather, there's no livable space up there. There's no deck, as to say, everything there is for, we can't.
That would be an improvement, other than that, the drawings are fine.
Okay, one question. So you're providing eight parking spaces, eight full, a full, full, full compact. What's required by zoning?
10, which would be five full inside compact.
Required equals 10, and you're providing eight, okay? Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppinger from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Two butters meetings were held on 8/13 and 9/22. Concerns from residents regarding density and design were heard. We would like to go on record and support with strong BPDA Design Review. We would also like to note that we earn support from Roxbury Main Streets, as well as the Boys and Girls Club of Roxbury. Thank you.
Thank you. Any raised hands?
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have numerous letters of non-support to this project, and in regards to the historical design of the buildings, unfortunately, I don't have any other than that.
Okay, I have a few hands raised, one hand raised, a few callers who called in.
Madam Chair, this is our members of the board, Sam Wurtzal from the Office of President, Kim Jeannie. So we have asked the proponents to defer, to allow for more time to resolve some of the issues, multiple issues raised by the community. We have received most letters of not support. We understand there are many good aspects about this project, but there are so many concerns about the proximity it has to a historical house, a home, Warren Street home, and the wall, the pudding stone wall. And we understand there is a commitment from the proponent to save as much as they can, but they have to comply with ADA. So ideally, we will have more time to resolve these issues. But as it is now, President Jeannie would like to go in opposition of this project, thank you.
Thank you. Sam, just for the record, the proponent obviously has decided to go ahead, so I assume that it's your, you are then in opposition of the project?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I hear from Lorraine Wheeler, please?
Okay, one second, okay. Elaine, you've been muted?
Hi, so I'm Lorraine Wheeler. I'm here representing Roxbury Forward Neighborhood Association. And, you know, if I could have a button that says ambivalent, that's what I would say. And it's because we have heard from a number of butters on Warren Street who would like changes in the design. But at the same time, the design, because it, the front of it is actually towards Warren Street, and because they're row houses, a lot of those houses don't have any view of the Warren Street. So then we really changed our interest toward the historic Warren House, which is a pending landmark, and the neighborhood has supported that. And so we've heard from the owners of the Warren House, who are on the call today, and I hope we can hear from them. Just because of the way this building may not be as sensitive to the Warren House, and doesn't have the setbacks, but at the same time, so I don't want to take too much time, but I do want to say that there is support of this building from the business community, that office space is needed in Roxbury. This is modern space. I've talked to the owner enough to know that he is open to continuing to talk to the neighbors. So our biggest issue at this time is if we could have the Landmarks Commission give some of their experience with, you know, fitting a modern building into an old neighborhood, and making, just making adjustments to it that doesn't result in too modern a building on that corner. So thank you very much.
Thank you. May I hear from Ricky Thompson, please? Give us new information after you put your name and address on the record.
My name is Ricky Thompson. I'm a board member of the Caribbean Foundation of Boston, and we supply health aids to Boston seniors. We provide employment.
Sir, Charles, are you in support or in opposition of this project?
We are in support.
Okay, Sophia, may I hear from you, please?
Okay, Sophia, I'll say.
Hi, thank you. I am in opposition of this project. My name is Sophia Transdamar.
Sophia, please give us new information, thank you.
I reside at 19 Winthrop Street. The office space that is being provided, along with the four-story height, is too much for this particular area. From 130 Warren Street all the way down to 88 Warren Street, there are 10 parcels, of which seven of them are below three feet in height. The previous building that was on this land had the substantial front-side yardage on the property, and it was only three feet in height. The fact or the argument that commercial space, modern commercial space is needed in the Nubian Square District, I do not agree with that, because there is a substantial amount of modern and refurbished commercial space in Nubian Square, which is feet away from this location, that has consistently been vacant pre-COVID.
Thank you. Anybody else have another thought?
Yep, I also have Robert George from Roxbury Main Streets.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. The Roxbury Main Streets Design Committee met with the developers and believe that this project fits within the Roxbury Strategic Master Plan and can facilitate more growth in the business district. We see this project bringing a lot of foot traffic into the square to enhance the business who are desperately looking for new audiences and new customers. So we support this project, it fits within the Roxbury Master Plan and Strategic Plan, thank you.
Thank you. So I have a question for the developer, this, the developer's representative. This is an MFR LS. So basically, the ground floor use is supposed to be a local service and the upper floor residential. You're proposing the entire building to be commercial?
Yes.
And the thing about Nubian Square is that the city has issued a whole number of RFPs. Developers have been designated, they've come to this board and have received approval for the construction of Class A office space. So, and this is a little bit outside of Nubian Square? The Nubian Square Market Analysis talks about the need to limit the additional office space and commercial space that's outside of the square. And so can you give us a response to that?
Certainly, Madam Chair. So, Madam Chair, just by way of background, this was office space from 1969 to 2014.
I remember this building, I remember visiting VB, Veterans Benefit Clearinghouse, VBC, all those years ago. So I'm completely aware of the building. However, it's burnt down, it's gone, it hasn't been reconstructed in the two-year timeframe. So essentially, the zoning, the MFR LS prevails. So tell us about this.
No, Madam Chair, I'm not refuting that, and I understand that position. However, my client proposed office space. He bought this land from a previous developer who failed at proposing multifamily residential. So as the board mentions, the zoning does allow for residential. The previous developer, not our client here, tried to go through that process for a year, and they could not do any type of development that the community was pleased with.
Was it, yeah, because I kind of remembered that there were issues with the density? Yep, so, so I, you know, for me personally, I think that this, this, you know, because you just, you haven't, I guess, responded to my question, why so much office space is necessary, when there is, there is a good amount of vacancy already?
Well, they have a client with a letter of intent, who wrote a letter of support, who's seeking this space, who's already in the area and seeking to move to new space. So although I think there may be some office space available, my client, who already purchased the property, is seeking to build a new, a new building and house his prospective client, who's currently in the area, in a neighboring property, and they're a nonprofit, and they'll be taking one floor of the space, and which will leave one floor of the space for his own use. So, I mean, Madam Chair, my client owns the land, it was office space before, we are seeking relief for that. But he's intending to use it for himself, as well as one of the supporters who is seeking to take a floor of the space. He's already purchased the land, and residential.
So, so I think it's clear to the board that the zoning here is multifamily residential with a minimal amount of ground floor retail space. There is a study, which I have to say, I have no vested interest in, but I do have a vested interest in, that talks the need of limiting commercial space to Nubian Square, so the vacancies on commercial and office space are decreased. There is also Class A space coming along with the three RFPs that have been approved by the city, and have been, two of the three have been approved by this board. So I just leave it out there, so may I have a motion, please?
May I speak in opposition?
Who is this?
My name is Alex Pierpont, and I'm one of the owners of 130 Warren Street, which is the.
Yes, please, please be fast, I don't.
We are in strong opposition to this project, mostly about its size. Our building is a historic site, and also a lovely pudding stone building, and would be totally cut off from the square and from the street by this building, which is just too big.
Thank you. Okay, so we're just cutting off comment. Please, Jessica, make sure that everybody is muted, Ms. Ambassador, make sure everybody is muted.
Yeah, I want to speak.
May I have a motion from the board, please?
I'll make a motion for approval with a PPDA Design Review to reflect the context, and also to replace the stair headhouse with a hatch.
Is there a second?
Could I make a comment, please?
Who is this? Is there, is there a second from a board member?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Licorice opposes.
I too am in, I too am in opposition, because this goes against everything that has been detailed in what is necessary for the growth and expansion of Nubian Square. So, but the motion, however, because there's five people in support, does.
Madam Chair, Mr. Jero is recused, so there's only six members hearing this appeal.
Okay, so the motion is denied, thank you for that reminder, thank you. So the motion is denied, the project is denied. Thank you.
Calling the next case. Oh, Madam Chair, it's 1:10. I'm going to call the 1 o'clock cases for deferrals or withdrawals. Could you please give me your address first, please? This is 1 o'clock, deferrals or withdrawals.
59A Strathmore, Mr. Secretary Road.
Okay, for the record, hold on two seconds, let me get to them. For the record, calling BOA 101411259A Strathmore Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano, with the address of 11 Beacon Street. We are seeking a deferral today. We had deferred at a prior hearing and worked with our rare butters and neighbors. We have made some headway.
Let me just ask you, which deferral is this? Is the request for second deferral?
Yes, Madam Chair, this is our second deferral request.
Please make sure that this is your last, okay?
Yes, it will be.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed Devoe.
All those in favor? Any opposed, the date, please?
March 23rd.
Madam Chair, for the record, Licorice recusing himself on this vote for the deferral.
Okay, who is this? I mean, so what date is this? What is the date, please?
23rd at 12:30.
Sorry, okay. Okay.
Madam Chair, we also have 304 Center on, I don't know if you want to go back to that, or?
No, let's.
No, we're at 1 o'clock right now.
Okay.
Any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1 o'clock, please?
Mr. Secretary, 1449 to 1453 Hypeback Avenue.
For the record. Sorry. 08937921, 1449, 1453, Hypeback Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, I'm actually standing in for Attorney George Moranci, requesting a deferral this matter. I believe there are plans that are being optimally to be reviewed by IST, based on changes that were made.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer, Madam Chair, Licorice.
There is a second.
Second, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the date, please?
March 23rd at 12:30.
3137 Beach Street, Mr. Secretary?
For the record, calling BOA 1028114, 31 to 37 Beach Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz, 245 Sumner Street, East Fallas, on behalf of Media Vision Incorporated, we're requesting withdrawal.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is the billboard sign. They've had numerous referrals, so they're withdrawing, but should we make a motion for denial? Denial without prejudice?
We just have to stand by a general procedure and go ahead with denial without prejudice.
All right, so I'll make the motion for denial without prejudice.
Second, Madam Chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 1 o'clock? Address, please. Is Perrin Street on?
I believe they were.
Well, we can, we can come back to if they are. If there are no more deferrals or withdrawals, I'll go back to the next case for 12:30. Calling BOA 10. Calling BOA one zero seven nine three six four six Oak Oakhurst Street. This is related for a new three-family residential building, the violation of Article sixty, section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Article sixty, section forty, parking maneuverability. Article sixty, section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty, section nine, insufficient additional lot area per unit. Article sixty, section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty, section nine, insufficient open space. Article sixty, section nine, insufficient front yard setback. And Article sixty, section nine, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, applicant here for Oakhurst Street.
Yes, let me, Kim, uh, yeah.
Please put your name and address and let's move.
Okay, Kim, you've been unmuted.
Uh, hi, this is Cam Raufi. I'm here uh to uh discuss my case at six Oakhurst.
So tell us what's proposing to do?
Uh, so the project is uh uh to construct a three-family, three-unit residential building on six Oakhurst Street. Couple of things I'd like to point out for this site is that there are four five vacant properties, vacant land on the left side of the uh lot, and a few more across the street on Oakhurst Street. And uh, there has been recently approval of uh similar approval for three family units across uh this street, directly across from this side for three-family development, and you're.
Okay, so hold on. Um, can, is there a roof deck proposed on this?
Yes, there is a roof deck accessible through a hatch.
Okay, roof deck through hatch. Tell us how the parking is going to work?
Sure, we are providing tree parking uh for this project, one for each unit, and uh uh, there there would be on site and uh the uh, yes, uh, and there uh all the Drake butters are truly supportive of the project.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on. Uh, Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Uh, technically, the plans are fine. Uh, it's a surprisingly modern-looking uh building in the midst of a very traditional-looking neighborhood.
Yeah, we can get to that. Uh, any questions from the board?
Mr. Ehrlich, that third parking space appears compact. What is the, is that turning radius for the two full-size spots adequate? Uh, hold on. Trying to pull it up.
Um, Madam Chair, I also have my architect, Mr. Phil Sima online, and he could answer any technical questions you guys.
Yeah, I know, it's a it's a ten yard, uh, ten, ten feet wide driveway, which is standard and um it it, you know, it's very tight, uh, but it could be, it could be done. Mr. Sima, can you address the turning radius for the parking spot closest to the building with respect to a a a compact spot being used uh alongside the building?
Uh, yes, hi, this is Philip Sima from Balance Architects. Um, we believe that you would be able to pull in, pull forward, and then uh back up into that compact part. Um, and you know, we have a ratio of two full spots to one compact spot. And we don't foresee this as an issue, but we do agree that the parking is tight, which is typical of many of the projects we work on in Boston.
Okay, um, any other questions? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, Whitney Celeston with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I did hold in a butters meeting for this project on October twenty-first. After they met with the Woodrow Ave Neighborhood Association on October fifteenth, we would like to go on record in support. We also advise strong um BPDA design review just because of the parking concerns and also the character being uh given the neighborhood that it's in with the um with such a new design. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dustin, Dustin, go ahead.
Now, one second, let me make, okay, you've been, Dustin, you're all set.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, behalf of City Councilor, Andrea Campbell's office, who would also like to go on record in support of this.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Councilor, Sabe George's office, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have numerous letters of support.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with a heavy, heavy BPDA design review on the design of the building and take a look at the parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one one zero six three three six five Tovar Street. The companion case, BOA one one zero six three four three nine Tovar Street. This is for five Tovar. This is a renovating converted three to a four-family residential. The violation is Article sixty-five, section eight. A four-family use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the maximum allowed floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty, Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine point two, dimensional regulations or location of the main entrance. Article sixty-six, section forty-two, off-street parking and loading. This is for nine Tovar, directly three-family residential building. Violation Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot area is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot width is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, lot frontage is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, rear yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-six, section forty-two, off-street parking and loading. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Scott Kirkwood, uh, representing Breck Properties. The owner address is nineteen oh four Washington Street, Roxbury.
So tell us what's being proposed?
So uh, we have uh the rehab of the existing building at five Tovar Street, and that building was vacated by fire in September of twenty nineteen. Um, we're proposing splitting the first floor and basement uh down the middle to essentially create two side-by-side duplex units. Uh, it's going to be four units in total um with one parking space provided for the additional unit that is being added. Um, the lot previously had uh no parking. Um, and then at nine Tovar, which is currently uh a vacant lot, we're proposing to construct a new uh three-family building that is smaller than the existing building at nine Tovar, a lot of surrounding buildings with uh two out of the three parking spaces required provided on site.
So a few questions. Um, on five, first of all, let's stress the parking. Um, will there be cross easements to allow for the parking to access the rear yard?
Yes, there will be.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so um, at five Tovar, there's going to be one space and three at um, at nine?
Uh, would you mind repeating that? Sorry, you broke up for a second there.
Sorry, so at, so how many parking spaces in the rear yard altogether?
Uh, three total, one at, one at number five and two at number nine.
Okay, then going back to five Tovar, can you um express, uh, explain to us um the use of the basement? Is there any bedroom space? What's the floor-to-ceiling height? Uh, how far above grade um is uh is is the the sill? Can you talk that through with us?
Uh, so I, the the sill will will be um in accordance with the requirements under the building code. Um, we're going to shoot for eight-foot finished ceiling height.
And what's the sill requirement under um the?
I do not know the the requirement offhand.
Forty-four inches.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate that.
So you will be.
Down there to to finish answering your question.
So you will continue to um excavate if you should need to, to get to what you need to do?
Yes, and and we do need to do that to allow for the proper clearance and and also just make it a better livable situation, so.
Okay.
Yep.
So there's, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Well, here we go again. Um, nine Tovar is fine. Um, uh, five Tovar, the basis, though what they've done is to uh broken up uh front and back. And the rear, it's not so much of a problem because the uh below grade about two feet, but the front is below grade four foot ten, almost five feet. Um, so, and you got, you've got a bedroom right in the front. Uh, so I I this, I mean, this is the same problem we're running into over and over again.
Okay, and let's look at nine Tovar. Is there any basement living in nine Tovar?
There is not.
Nine Tovar is basement and storage.
Is storage, okay. Any questions from the board? Is there going to be a roof deck on this?
Uh, there will not. Uh, there will not be. There will be front and rear decks in uh nearly every unit, but no decks on the roof, so the height will remain as is of the existing building at number five. And then number nine will be built to match the height of number five in the other adjacent buildings.
Okay, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Greetings, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Chantaly Manbarboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held on October twenty-sixth of this year where the applicant presented both proposals and received support from the Director Butters. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this proposal.
Madam Chair, can I ask the applicant a question?
Hold on, hold on, let's let's just find out from Miss Ambassador if there's anybody else to speak, either in support or in opposition.
Madam Chair, I have um two raised hands and a raised hand from Lorraine. I'm not sure if she wants to speak, but I have two other raised hands for this project.
Madam Chair, uh, Secretary here, we have numerous letters of support.
Okay, um, can I, uh, is this Dorchester?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, can I hear from Joe, please?
Yes. Okay, Joe, you've been unmuted. Hi, Joe. Okay, I'm not sure what's going on there. Joe?
How about, uh, Mr. Cole French? Go ahead, Joe.
Can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, good morning, Madam Chair, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeek, City Council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cole French?
Let's see. Okay, you've been unmuted? Hello? Nothing here.
Okay, may, um, so let's take, uh, I'd like to get to a motion. Let's take five Tovar Street first. May I have a motion?
Um, I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA design review that would.
Hello?
Oh, sorry.
Hello, this is, uh, sorry, I'm so sorry. This is Will Cole French, and I just.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, Miss Ambassador, time has come and gone. We are going to.
Thank you.
Thank you for trying anyway. Um, so, uh, five Tovar, this is a request to convert from a three to a four-family dwelling. Uh, your motion, Mr. Ehrlich?
So the motion is to approve with BPDA design review to uh make sure that there are no bedrooms in the front unit uh of five Tovar. In the basement.
I will second the motion subject to a cross uh cross easement with respect to uh five Tovar, nine Tovar for the parking easements.
All right, I accept that.
Okay, so you are uh supporting then the conversion from a three to a four-family?
With this proviso that I suggested, yes.
Okay, um, the ma- is there a second?
Yeah, that was seconded by uh Ligrus with respect to the cross easement.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Another one for nine Tovar, please.
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that one. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commander Ambassador, did you say that Center Street was on?
Yes, yes, they are. Let me.
I'm going to recall Center Street, Madam Chair. Calling BOA one zero four four five five four three oh four, Center Street. This is a removal proviso from the previous owner and change to a new owner. The violation is Article six, section four. Change to a previous decision of the Board of Appeal. Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, uh. Four Center Street is Jamaica Lane.
Tell us what you're proposing to do?
Supposed to do change the owner's uh owner's name to the.
And so tell us what what the name is and what the business is going to be?
Uh, it's going to be like a M, uh, Capes Pizza is going to be the same, same.
Same, same, same business but different owner, okay? Do you have experience with takeout?
Uh, we do have takeout and delivery.
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant received the unanimous support of the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Justin McClary from City Council, Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record and support.
Uh, good afternoon, and Karen Foley, Councilor, Sabe George's office, would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Miss Ambassador, anybody else?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Second, Joe.
Uh, is this the, to this petitioner only and the usual takeout provisos?
Yes, petitioner only, usual takeout proviso.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, uh, any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one zero seven two four four eight sixteen House. This is seeking to change article of existing single-family structure to a four-family structure and renovate, including a rear addition and creation of six parking spaces. To combine lots to form one new lot of six thousand five hundred square feet. Six thousand five hundred square feet. The violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-one, off-street parking and loading maneuvering. Article sixty-five, section eight, the MFR is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the petitioner, and I also have James Christopher from RCA as the architects on the proposal. Seeking, as was mentioned, to renovate that front existing structure and to add an addition in the rear that will include a total of four condominium units and six rear parking spaces in the building. Um, just to point out, there will also be a full historic renovation of this project in our work with the community. Um, to go over the floor plans, this particular area is a zone three F five thousand, which is common to this area, and our lot size is six thousand five hundred square feet. The um, one is in the front building, which is the existing building that will be renovated. That will have a separate entrance, would be a one-bed, one-and-a-half-bath at seven hundred and sixty-seven square feet. Unit two, uh, in that same front structure, would also be seven hundred and sixty-seven square foot, one-bed, one-and-a-half-bath with a separate entrance. Then we go into the addition portion, which would be unit three and four, which would be three-bed, two-and-a-half-bath units. The height of these buildings, the building would remain what it is now, which is a two-and-a-half-story structure. Uh, we had a an original proposal to raise the building, but uh in working with the community, we wanted to keep this. It is uh pending uh a further study at the Landmarks Commission, so in working with them, we came up with this plan, yep.
And so can you tell us what's the total uh uh gross square feet of the existing building? And what's the total square feet of the proposed addition?
So the the addition is thirty-two feet wide, uh, sorry, thirty-two feet by th- in length by thirty-six feet wide. Um, the existing building.
So, sorry, that's um thirty-two by thirty-six?
Correct, Madam Chair. That's that rear addition to the building. Correct, Madam Chair, that's that rear addition to the building. The front building, I don't know if James is on the call, if he can attest to that. It, it is, and, and the reason for this addition is, uh, the community was adamant about keeping this building...
Okay, so tell us the square feet about the existing building?
Um, is James on the call? If he could be...
Yes, he's a panelist, uh, James Christopher?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board.
All right, we can hear you, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm, I was having trouble hearing there and connecting. What, uh...
What's, what's gross square footage of the existing building?
I think it's around 25 or 26 hundred square...
25, yeah, 2600 square feet. I don't have the cover sheet in front of me, so I don't have the exact square footage.
About 2600 square feet, uh...
So the existing building is 2600 square feet, and the addition is 20, essentially 2300 square feet?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're doubling the size of the structure. Tell us how parking is working on this?
So there is an existing curb cut, um, on, on the building, Madam Chair, and there will be six parking spaces in the rear. There would be three, um, full-size spaces with three tandem spaces, uh, behind it. And, um, so we actually removed our parking violation from our last iteration. So we are parking compliant. Um, we have three existing violations. One is for use, this is a 3F district, um, although there are four and sixes in the area. We're proposing four, so that's MFR. Um, FAR is .5 what's allowed. We're proposing 7.4. And our rear yard is close, we're at 27 feet, 10 inches, and 30 feet is what's...
What's the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay, it is a pretty dramatic increase in density.
Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, Secretary here, uh, just Bob D'Amico from BTD has spoke on this one.
Yeah?
He said 16 House Street should be approved for four spaces only. Also, the curb cut shown, the plan says 20 feet. It should not exceed 12 feet because there was no on-street parking on both sides of House Street.
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Greetings, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Chantaly MaBarboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant started a community process with my predecessor. Since then, they've had multiple Butters' meetings and presentations to the Hancock Street Civic Association. While Hancock Street Civic Association opposes the proposal, the applicant has made significant changes to the plans to address the concerns presented by the community. That being said, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this proposal.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office would also like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have letters of support, and we also have letter of opposition to the Hancock Association.
Madam Chair, I have one caller, uh, with their hand up.
Thank you.
Hi, caller, uh, 407?
Hi, uh, this is Tiffany and Janice Sales, the Butters, uh, to 16 House Street. Uh, we're one of the many Director Butters who, uh, have opposition to this, uh, project for the excessive unit, um, as well as excessive tandem parking spaces. In addition, the building has a stock value. We would really like it, as well as a lot of neighbors who see the, uh, pennant, the outcome of the, uh, Landmark Commission's, uh, position on this home. But, uh, we have been against this, um, against this project, um, due to, uh, the many, uh, details I just described. So I just wanted to go on record saying that again, um, that, again, ourselves as well as some of the Director Butters that are affected, that are through street, it's just many different variables. We do not support this project.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have another hand raised?
Thank you.
Hi, caller, 617436, you've been unmuted?
Yes, my name is Wilmer Brown. I live at 19 House Street and have lived there for almost 30 years. I too oppose this, as for the comments that my neighbors, people who mention...
Thank you. Thank you. Um, can I hear from Will, because I cut him off the last time?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to go on record as, uh, opposed to this project. I live at 16 Real Street, which is within the 300-foot of Butter range, and I have followed this project carefully. There are a number of features of it, the density, um, I, the lack of accuracy in communication. There is no current curb cut, you can see that clearly on Google Maps. I don't know why the developer is stating that there's a curb cut. There is none there. And in fact, there's a light post directly where they planned to put it. Personally, I believe single-family homes are rare in Dorchester and that they should be preserved, um, to maintain a mix of diversity within the community. And I, second, um, and third, all of the concerns that my neighbors, who I know, have expressed.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, uh, from BPDA?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jeff and it's a BPDA. Uh, our recommendation was to deny without prejudice. Um, to echo Mr. Ehrlich's comments, uh, the addition of this is just massive. And because it's a forbidden use and the, the density of the proposal, we are, uh, on the record in opposition.
Okay, thank you. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, Council, it's been denied without prejudice.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1125859, 33 to 397 Hill Avenue. This is a removal proviso, the violation is Article 7, Section 4. Advisor to this petitioner only. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Miller, Victoria Quotey Miller, 28 State Street, Boston, Suite 802, representing the owner and applicant, uh, 33397 Hill, LLC.
So tell us...
Madam Chair, Ligris procusing for the record.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so can you please tell us what the business is? The name of the business, the petitioner, and if they have experience with takeout?
Yep, so the, the applicant is, uh, 33397 Hill Ave. He's a property owner who's applying to remove the, um, to remove the proviso. Uh, this, they have a, uh, a separate entity that's gonna be coming in to operate the, the... Uh, this is the former Venice Pizza location, uh, at that spot. It operated for over 40 years as a takeout restaurant space. Uh, Jason Weisman and the management team, um, are going to return this neighborhood institution, um, right, to provide the affordable options for the residents of the community. Um, they have the management team, um, which is Winter Brothers LLC, which has, um, among others, Josh Warner, who has experience in the restaurant industry, and John, um, Xeha Charis, who also has a lot of experience in the restaurant industry.
Okay, hold on, so the name, what is going to be the name of this restaurant?
The, the restaurant is gonna be Venice Pizza LLC, it's Venice Pizza.
Okay, tell us the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
Uh, the plans, I mean, the demands.
We're making almost no changes on maybe paint to the exterior and, uh, upgrading the kitchen and interior to be ADA compliant.
Okay.
Minimal work.
Hold on, Mr. Miller, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Patrick Vandel, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. There was a Butters' meeting held for this property, and they met with the Columbia 7 Hill Civic Association, um, with no larger concerns raised. We would like to go on record in support and ask for continued BPDA design review specifically around the grates on the front of the property.
And Madam Chair, I can say I've spoken with the, the applicant regarding those grates. They are going...
Samilla, can you please hold on? We're just in the process of still taking testimony. Okay, is anybody else here to speak? Ms. Ambassador, is there, are there any raised hands?
No, ma'am.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve for this petitioner only with the usual takeout language with the design review, uh, as far as grates are concerned.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're all set, good luck.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1005295, 571B Washington Street. This is planning to open a dispensary at 571B Washington Street. Violation is Article 65, Section 15. Cannabis dispensary is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, this is Kyle Smith of TDS Law. Business address of, uh, 359 Newbury Street, fifth floor, Buck Bay. Uh, on the call with me is, uh, Jeff Similian, who is presently owner, the proponent, and also CEO. I have Rob Nichols on the line, or on the phone as well, or on, on the call, who is proponent, owner, COO, and also a licensed contractor. And Jonah MagnaCott, who is the project architect. And I also have John, uh, uh, Guarini, who is the, uh, Chief Security Officer.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, Madam Chair, we currently have an existing non-utilized restaurant that proponent has submitted plans to ISD. There's a motion to refuse a letter from 2019 in September. They have been through, uh, all of the ups and downs inside and outside of the city.
Let me ask you, so this is, um, 571B, what's the B for? It's, um, is this next to the Citizens Bank?
Uh, it is to, if you're looking at the property, Madam Chair, that is to our right. So, yeah, it's in close proximity to the Citizens Bank.
So this is five, okay, let me just, oh, I see it's next door to the Citizens Bank, okay? So give us details, tell us how many square feet, hours of operation. Um, this is recreational, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So give us details, please.
Perfect, I will let the project architect step in. I just want to let you know that, as provided to ZBA Council, we just received dated today, a letter of support from the, uh, Boston Cannabis, uh, Board, and that's been provided to ZBA Council.
Thank you.
Solely seeking a area for a recreator for the use, conditional use of a cannabis dispensary. I'll let the project architect step in to answer, uh, square footages, et cetera.
So, um, I, I, whoever it is that's on the table can answer this. Tell us how, um, the flow is going to work. Tell us when deliveries are, where deliveries are stored, where, i- is that gonna be security? How will lines be handled? And if anything will allow for online, um, uh, reservation of product? And I, I think I said hours of operation.
Jeff, are you on the call? If not, I can step in, as a COO, Robert Nichols, Madam Chair. Um, so the hours of operation are 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM per our host community agreement. As far as security...
Is that seven days a week?
It is seven days a week. However, we are gonna see how the, uh, traffic flow is and, and make adjustments accordingly to see what days will close or will reduce hours. From what we understand, you know, Sunday evenings in, in this industry have been very quiet. So more than likely, yeah, it'd be minimal hours on Sundays.
Okay, so go ahead with the rest of the answers?
As far as how we're gonna handle the lines at the location. So we are encouraging pre-ordering. Our goal is to try to get as many pre-orders, as, as much as 50 to 70% pre-orders, um, so that people can come in very quickly and pick up and drop off. There is a municipal lot, uh, to the left of the building, and, um, we're attached to a, a store there that isn't operational right now. Um, there's about 43, uh, municipal parking spaces in the, the city lot there, so we plan on utilizing that space, um, so that folks know they can come in, pick up, and, and leave very quickly. We're also within a short walk to Shamet T Station. So, you know, obviously, there'll be a lot of folks coming via transit, and then we are gonna have a bike rack at the rear of the building so that people can store bikes if they wanna, you know, ride their bikes, um, over to the location, so...
So tell us about, uh, deliveries, uh, of the, of the product to the store? When will that occur?
So deliveries will be tentatively in, in the off-hours, and it'll be at the rear of the building, um, so that it doesn't disturb our normal flow of business or flow of traffic. Um, there is an adjacent parking lot, which we have an easement to access for deliveries there. Um, and so as the product comes in at the rear door here, as you'll see on the plan, it'll be taken in and then weighed, can confirm that we have the proper product, and it will be brought down into our storage boat, um, in the lower level of the space. Total square footage is 1,700, uh, square feet on the upper level. Same for the lower level, uh, lower level will be used primarily for storage only.
And so the access will be through Aspen Wall Street?
Correct, so the delivery access will be through Aspen Wall Street, that's correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I know because the court is there, that public lot fills up pretty quickly. Um, tell us what your security plan is?
So we, uh, have a third-party, uh, Westcon, uh, security team that will be using it. John Guarini, John, are you on the call? He can speak. Perfect, perfect, if you wanna take, uh, the security...
Just, yes.
Yep.
Um, Nichols, can you tell us very quickly, will there be, uh, security on-site all the time while the facility is open?
Yes, there will be, so we'll have security, uh, when we initially open, we're gonna have two to three security, uh, personnel on-site during all hours of operation, as well as the first month, uh, a Boston police officer detail, just to really ensure the flow of traffic is, is happening in a way that is conducive to not disrupt, uh, you know, Commons Square, which we know is a very busy, uh, location.
And, um, do you, does anybody in your team have experience with running, uh, one of these facilities?
So we have strategic partners, uh, we're in talks with to help with the day-to-day operations, but being that it's a new business, you, I, I have a significant amount of business experience and my partner Jeff as well, so we run real estate offices. Um, I have a retail background, I worked, uh, for the retail industry at the executive level, um, as well for Stop &amp; Shop Corporate for many years. So while we're new to cannabis, we're not new to retail sales and retail business.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Ehrlich?
The drawings are okay.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Greetings, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Chantaly MaBarboza with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. A community process was held by my predecessor for this proposal. While the Commons Square Neighborhood Council opposes cannabis establishment in this area, we acknowledge that this is an equity applicant that has been approved by the Boston Cannabis Board. Additionally, this proposal is located in a business district and will stimulate economic development in this area. That being said, the Mayor's Office would like to go on record and support this, this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands.
Is, uh, Rudy, uh...
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have eight letters of opposition.
Okay, um, Ms. Ambassador, can you check, please, again, if there are any raised hands?
It was just... Oh, yep, go ahead.
Hi, how are you? Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and, uh, members of the board. My name is I, Derek Warner, and I'm located at 356 Lincoln Street, uh, Apartment 5, Walton, Massachusetts. And I'm speaking in favor of the proposal by Loki Dispensary. Uh, Jeff Similian, Rob Nichols, and Loki have done so much with the community, so I'm in full support of minority-owned businesses in the area getting opportunity to give back and stay back within the community, so, hope for the opportunity.
Thank you, is, um, may I hear from Rudy Landers?
I don't see that person on the call. Oh, oh, gotcha, okay, yep, all set, you've been unmuted, Rudy.
Thank you, um, good afternoon, everybody, and, um, the members of the board and the chairman. Um, I'd like to speak in support of Loki Dispensary, um, opening up a dispensary in the Commons Square location. I think it would be great for the community and that they'll do a lot of good work, you know, in, um, hiring in the minority aspect and also just providing, you know, good space for their employees and the community.
Rudy, can you please put your address on the record, please?
Yes, um, 27 Morris Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Alex Middleton, please.
All right, go ahead, Alex, you're unmuted.
Raising my hand in support of, uh, Jeff and Loki Dispensary because it brings much-needed jobs to the community. Uh, it also enables and, uh, empowers people that have been marginalized by the war on drugs. And in addition to that, I've spoken to him extensively. We're training people on, you know, how to set up LLCs, and overall, I think it's a great idea. I live at 61 Bernard Street, Dorchester, Mass.
Thank you, Jessica?
Yep, Jessica, you've been unmuted?
Thank you, my name is Jessica Landers, and I reside at Six Church Lane in Chelmsford, Massachusetts, and this is in...
And this is in support of Lowkey Dispensary. We have worked with Jeff Similian very closely, and he is the right person to bring something to this district area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
My name is Mark Conrad, I'd like to speak.
Mark, go ahead. Mark, give us new information, please. Put your name and address on the record.
Yeah, name is Mark Conrad. My address is 66 Parkway Crescent. And I am the CEO of Westcon Personal Protection. All of my business, 89% of my business is done in the Boston area.
So, so Mark, are you the security firm for this?
Yeah, we're.
Okay, so I'm okay, I don't need to hear from you, thank you. No offense. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve. With the signature, you give the signage.
Is there a second? To this petitioner only?
Yeah, this petitioner only, yeah.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1043391, 16 Colonial Avenue. This is two car parking, violation Article 10, Section 1. Limitation of off-street parking area in Article 65, Section 9, usable open spaces insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Madam Chair, I have a note here. I don't know if you have updated plans. Does Mark have updated plans?
I have a plot plan.
So I understand that the office has made every attempt to get in touch with the applicant, and there's been no response. May I have the applicant on the line, please? Mr. De Silva, are you the, are you speaking on behalf of this project? Cesar? Is the applicant here for Colonial Ave? Mr. Fitch, and let's just move on.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 1057138, 26 Doncaster Street. This is new construction of a single-family residence. The violation is Article 67, Section 9, lot area insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, lot width is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 67, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, the building height, number of stories is excessive. Article 67, Section 9, front yard is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 9, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
This is the board, my name is Alfonso Sierra, I'm the architect, and I'm representing the client, Vidal Garcia. And what we're proposing is a single-family residence, Gambrill style, in basically three bedrooms with four bathrooms, finished basing, finished first floor and second floor, and not finished attic.
Tell us, this is, so this is a 1F 6,000 square foot lot. What's the size of this lot?
The lot is noncompliant. It's about 5,000, 5,204 square feet, so it doesn't meet the minimum. I'm sorry?
So no stop parking will work?
I mean, right now, there's parking in the back. The client lives, if you can see on the left, Vidal Garcia, he lives on the left side, and he owns this lot, and he uses the back of it right now for parking. But we're shifting the curb cut to the right so that we can have a driveway through the back. So it will work. I'm proposing, it seems like it works.
How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The plans are minimal, but they're adequate.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, we have six letters of opposition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Coppinger with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record in opposition of this proposal. We did facilitate a community process for this application. Unfortunately, they were not able to get any support from any bottoms. There were some concerns around the parking situation, the size of the lot equals the size of the house. And I believe a number of letters of objection submitted on the record in the last comments.
So may I ask you, this is one family proposed in a one-family zone?
Yes.
And so this, and it feels like it's 800 square feet smaller, but I'm suspecting that all the lots pretty much on the road are nonconforming to 6,000. But there's still opposition to this project?
Madam Chair, is that directed to me or the applicant?
That's directed to Mr. Coppinger.
Yes, no, I don't understand the lot size. And I believe a number of the lots on the street are equal to, or close to 5,200, what this one's presenting. But we didn't hear, I haven't heard any support for this proposal since the application came across my face.
Anybody else to speak on this project?
Madam Chair, I have four raised hands.
Let's go, let's go, please.
Alex, you've been unmuted.
Hi, my name is Alexis Rosenblatt. I live in 30 Doncaster Street. I'm immediately next door to the proposed construction. I have strong opposition to the property. One, there are just too many variances, and the lot size is simply too small for the size of the proposed house. And the other is that part of the proposal, which you can see, includes property beyond the chain-link fence, next to and including part of my existing driveway, which I installed. And I would submit that the land is subject to claim of adverse possession and would further shrink the size of the legal building that they're trying to place in this lot.
So essentially, your, bottom-line issue that I gather from you is that you feel a building is too big, and secondly, you're concerned about the parking.
I'm concerned that part of the proposal includes removing the existing fence and part of my current driveway, which I have, which including all of the, I would say that has been not used by them for a significant amount of time.
Okay, so you're trying to claim adverse possession of that driveway? You're trying to claim adverse possession of that driveway, then? Okay, anybody else to speak on this project?
Can I add something about that driveway?
No, 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 no questions right now. Let's just go ahead with this proposal. Let me, let's just go ahead with testimony.
Joe Pondak, you've been unmuted.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe Pondak. I live at 111 Gallivan Boulevard in Dorchester. Speaking on behalf of my aunt and uncle, who live at 10 Doncaster Street on an 8,000-square-foot lot, and they've been there for 50 years. I just want to reiterate what I said in my letter. This project is much too big. It is, in reality, a three-story house with the potential for 4,000 square feet of living space that could be added within the house in the future. And that there's, also that there's, this will take away the parking from the existing 22 Doncaster Streets. So they're, while they're providing two parking spaces for the new house, they're taking away all of the parking from the existing house. And further on that, I mean, there's absolutely no hardships demonstrated here, or special circumstance that would justify the variance. Therefore, my aunt and uncle, Philip and Susan, Smedley, are in strong opposition to this. And also with that, there are a number of lots on that street next door and across the street that exceed the 6,000 square feet. So this is not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Cesar De Silva, you've been unmuted?
Yes, hi.
Are you here to speak on Doncaster Street?
No, I'm here to speak 16 Colonial, I'm.
Okay, we've moved on, so just stay on and we'll get back to you. So, so did we hear from everybody? Let's hear from the attorney for the project, or the applicant, or the architect for the project.
Yes, basically, I don't agree with many of the comments. The, first of all, the survey was certified by a surveyor, and there was, the property is owned by Vidal Garcia. I never heard of any adverse conflict or such. And second of all, all the properties, this building is no larger than anything that's around there.
So I'm looking at Google Maps, and there's a fenced-in area. Is that part of your proposed property?
Yeah, I mean, it's, whatever it's within the survey, it was legally certified.
So I'm looking at Google Maps, and it looks like all the properties on that side of the street have these smaller lots. However, they look like they're one and a half, possibly two stories. So I can see, I can see on that side of the street why the opposition is there.
The stories, it's the same. The average, it's below 35 feet, and it's going to have stories.
Mr. Massey, can you mute, mute this person? So given this information, may I have a motion, please? And remember, sometimes the hardest thing to build is a one-family in a one-family zone. Right? So may I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second, Libris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I think I'm opposed.
I too am, I too am opposed because I do believe that this person then has no property rights if they can't build a one-family in a one-family zone.
Madam Chair, I'm opposed as well, Ed Devoe.
Ed Devoe, okay, so motion does not carry. May I have another motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with BPDA Designer, too.
Is there a second?
Second, Ed Devoe.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Libris opposed.
Motion, Libris, you're opposed, motion carries. And please, Jeff, can you make sure there's very significant design review? Because it does not look like this proposed design is contextual.
I will, yeah.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 1099399, 32 Perkins Street. The companion case, BOA 1099404, 32 R. Perkins Street. This is for 32 Perkins. The change of occupancy from a three-family dwelling to a two-family dwelling. Extend living space into the basement with a second kitchen for Unit 1. The violation is Article 55, Section 41.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 55, Section 9, the main entrance must face the front lawn line. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, side yards insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yards insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. This is for 32 R., 32 R. Perkins Street. Demolish the existing carriage house, garage, construct a new one-family structure of similar size. Both buildings, renovation and change to both buildings. The violation, Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking and loading requirement. No front yard parking is allowed. Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking loading requirement. Article 55, Section 40.5A, parking maneuverability. Article 55, Section 41.12, two or more dwellings on the same lot. Article 55, Section 8, Use of Regulations. Article 55, Section, lot frontage is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Article 55, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Timothy Burke. I have a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. And with me today is also the owners.
So Tim, let me just ask you, is this the project that came before us to have the Airbnb?
Yes, that was a, just a little over a year ago, we appeared before the board, and that request was denied.
Yes, so at that point, it was essentially the same layout of the current building, and then that second building on the same lot. And I think we had an issue then with the second building on the same lot. Tell us what's changed. I mean, in addition to, you know, the concept of that air, that illegal Airbnb, tell us what's changed in this, in this version?
Yes, the, we went back to the drawing board, and the idea was to convert the three-family that you see here in the photograph to a two-family. And then to rebuild the carriage house that's in the back. You can just see a little bit of it there behind the building in the photograph on your screen. And that would be a single-family. The idea was to make these family-oriented units, so the first floor and basement would be combined into one unit. That would be 2,919 square feet. And the second and third floor would be combined into one unit at 2,579 square feet.
Okay, I'm still, I don't know, Tim, you might know that, you know, we're generally not supportive on two buildings on the same lot because it allows very little privacy and open space and use of the backyard. So, you know, just to put that out there, the second.
I am aware of the, there is an, there is an existing carriage house there now that was occupied at some point.
Carriage house is, I mean, I understand a carriage house is a carriage house. It's meant to be maybe something else. But tell us about the extension of the main building into the basement. What's, what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement? And what's the use of that space?
The, there would be additional living space in the basement. It has a nine-foot ceiling. It's quite, it's nice and dry. It's quite a good basement to work with. Again, with a nine-foot ceiling, it doesn't seem too much like a basement. The sill would be for the egress windows, which we are used to on the left there. That sill would be 30 inches below grade and well within the three feet that is allowed before you need to add a ladder to a window wall. So we were proposing two bedrooms in that level and a family space. There had been a little convenience kitchen shown there, but at the JP Neighborhood Council, there was concerns about that, so we have removed that from the proposal.
Okay.
The first floor is the primary living space for that unit. The proposed addition is a new stairway at the rear of the building because the existing stairs, and it's an old, very small stairs. So we're looking to improve the access to the upper-level unit with that stairway.
So am I reading this right? Is that the first unit would be a four-bedroom?
Yes, correct. Both units would be four-bedrooms, in the main building.
Okay. Okay. And in the carriage house, what is the proposed, it's proposed as a one-family structure of similar size to the existing building? Is that what's being proposed?
That is correct. We did go through the Article 85 demolition review with this carriage house.
Yeah.
And the proposed replacement carriage house would be, have 2,185 gross square feet of floor area.
And there would be a total of four bedrooms in that as well.
The existing carriage house is in, it's in fairly poor condition. It did have a fire at one time. So we propose to add a sprinkler system to this.
And I forget how many units came through when it was proposed, an Airbnb?
I believe we had 17 bedrooms at that time, which had caused concerns about the density.
So now we're down to 16 bedrooms?
Well, yes. Well, yes, I think that, um, a lot of, what I'm seeing today is that a bedroom is often used for an office or where people are working remotely, so, but yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Excuse me, uh, we, I just want to say-
Plans more, um-
We have twelve bedrooms, not sixteen, twelve. It's three, it's a three-family with four bedrooms.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Uh, Mr. Olick, um, how are the plans?
Well, um, this looks a lot, uh, like the same, uh, warmed-over, uh, plans. I, Mr. Burke, you said that the, that the kitchenette in the basement had been removed. It's on the plans that I have.
Um, I submitted new plans to, uh, the board for this presentation. So it's on, the one that's on the screen is what we're proposing. That does not have a kitchen in the basement.
Um, Black, can you go down and show that? Because the ones that I was giving just a few days ago have the kitchenette.
This is it, here on your left, you can see the basement. It was in that area where it's labeled hall.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're not proposing to do that.
Okay, uh, well, uh, that, I mean, that, that was, uh, that caught my eye because it seemed like that, in fact, it was, uh, the goal was to create a separate unit.
Yeah, the, uh, plans are really quite different than the orig-, you know, what we proposed as a boutique hotel was the original proposal. I totally reworked them.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, um, Bob D'Amico spoke on this one. He said thirty-two Perkins should only have, uh, three spaces. There exists off-street parking on the opposite of the building.
Okay, um, is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Prime Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held on September first, two thousand and twenty. Four butters expressed support for this proposal. Jamaica Plain Neighbor Council also supported the proposal. So the mayor's office would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have three hands raised.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, uh, members of the board. Karen Foley would like, uh, from Counselor Savi George's office, would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Mr. Masler?
Okay, you're all set? All right, we get the, right, I have Justin McClary. Yep.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the boards. Justin McClary from City Councilor Matt O'Malley's office. The council would also like to go on record and support.
Thank you.
All right, and I also have David Jerry, second. David, you've been unmuted.
Hi, my name is David Gary. I'm a teacher in Boston. I live at One Maple Street. I'm in support of this plan. I always shop at the Whole Foods right next to it. And I think it's, uh, gonna be a beautiful building. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also have, come, Max. Max, you've been unmuted?
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Max Glickman. I live at seven Glenvale Terrace in Jamaica Plain. I fully support this project. Uh, I agree that we need more density in Jamaica Plain. And I like the fact that there are four parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a design review.
Second, Ligris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And for the record, I too am in, I'm opposed because two buildings on the same lot, on a very small lot like this, seems overly dense. There are five, five people in support, so the motion carries.
Madam Chair, we're gonna go back to Colonial Avenue. The case BOA one zero four three three nine one sixteen Colonial Avenue. This is two-car parking. You have violations Article ten, section one, limitation of off-street parking. And Article sixty-five, section nine, usable open space is insufficient.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Just for the record.
Uh, please put your name and address on the record, Caesar, let's go.
Okay, my name is Caesar De Silva. Uh, represent and Domingos De Silva. But, uh, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
So, uh, let me start at the beginning. How many, uh, how many families? Is this a two-family or a one-family? And is the parking in the front yard or is it in the side yard? And finally, the last question is, is there parking on that side of the street?
Uh, yes, there is parking on that side of the street. Uh, is it, it is a two-family. And we proposing two off-street parking.
And is it the front yard or in the side yard?
On the side yard. On, uh, facing the left side of the, of the-
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Well, as you can see, it is, it is side yard, so that's okay. Um, the drawings, uh, um, Kalah, can you just, uh, scroll down just a, just a little bit? I believe, no, the other way, the other way, I'm sorry, scroll. Uh, it's a fourteen-foot curb cut. Uh, there's no reason for that. The twelve, twelve is, uh, is plenty and, you know, the sidewalk space is, uh, is precious. So, um, other than that, it's fine.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. We need to ask the mayor's office of neighborhood services. I did hold a butters meeting for this project and we'd like to go on the record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Justin Gardner on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We would also like to go on record and support.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve a supervisor that the, uh, uh, driver, the curb cut not exceed twelve feet.
Do we need to do that? Do we need to do that through design review, Mr. Olick?
I think that's the only issue, so I think if that supervises on its side.
Okay, so, uh, and it's been second motion, uh, is, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Following the next case, calling BOA one 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 three seven nine seven thirty-six Nellian Circle. This is to remove and demo the existing one-story frame, structure. The existing foundation erected two and a half story new construction. Violation Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. And Article fifty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Gary Mattel, I live at fifteen Brownson Terrace in Jamaica Plain.
So tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, yes, my partner and I, James McCabe, uh, currently own thirty-six Nellian Crescent in Jamaica Plain. Uh, it's an existing, uh, non-conforming, single-family house in the one F nine thousand district. Uh, we are proposing to, uh, save the existing foundation. Remove the existing one-story, eight-hundred-and-eighty-eight square foot, uh, ranch. And we propose to add, uh, an addition, twenty-six by twenty-four addition off the back and add a two-and-a-half-story, uh, structure, single-family home on the top of that, uh, combined old and new foundation.
So what's the total square footage of this proposed one-family?
Uh, it's a little under three thousand. It's like twenty-nine hundred and ninety-three. About, um, three hundred and fifty square feet over of what's allowed.
And so your violation is building height and F A R. Tell us how the parking is proposed to work?
Um, if you pull up the screen there, that elevation right there, on the left side, there's an existing driveway. Uh, it won't change. Uh, the existing house has actually a garage, uh, under on the rear of it. Uh, we're proposing the same concept, we're not moving the curb cut. Um, and obviously with that, that twenty-four by twenty-six addition off the rear there, uh, that two-car garage would be basically under part of the two-and-a-half-story frame. And, uh, the additional ten feet would become a flat roof that would, uh, entertain the deck for that house.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Uh, drawings, Mr. Olick.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Lindsay Santana from the Office of Neighborhood Services. And a butters meeting was held on August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. And the applicant received the support of the Jamaica Hills Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighbor Council. The mayor's office would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have one letter of opposition from the Director Butters. He's just opposed to the size of the project.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley would like to go on record in support of this project. From Boston Councilor Anissa Savi George's office, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA designer review.
Thank you.
Second, Ligris.
I'm sorry, um, Ligris, will you-
Second, Ligris.
Oh, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Following the next case, calling BOA one one two one six four four one forty-three Dent Street. Just erect a new single-family dwelling. Violation Article fifty-six, section thirty-nine, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-six, section eight, lot width is insufficient. Article fifty-six, section eight, lot frontage is insufficient. Article fifty-six, section eight, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-six, section eight, front yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-six, section eight, side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Well, um, Brendan Donovan, I'm at one forty-three Dent Street. And I'm Andrew, I'm the general contractor for the project.
So please tell us what's being proposed?
Uh, right, so we're proposing to tear down and rebuild an existing single-family home. Um, the existing home is, I believe, one thousand seventy-five square feet. The new proposed home, um, the finished first floor and second floor will be two thousand six hundred and ninety square feet, not including the basement. Um, it's gonna be a four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bathroom, single-family home. Um, a big reason for doing this project, at least for Brendan and his father, John, uh, we used to actually have John come and move into the home with him. John will have living on the first loop. So he won't have to be, you know, battling windows stairs. He currently lives in Rosendale right now. And, uh, really, really, uh, needs to be living on a one-story home.
Is this a prefab or is it stick-built?
No, it's gonna be stick-built.
Okay, looks very bucolic. Okay, um, um, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Plans, Mr. Olick.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jack Duggan, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, would just like to go on record and support. Uh, we had a butters meeting back in October, on October eighth. I believe only one neighbor attended who was in support. Uh, Brendan then went before the West Rock neighborhood council on October twenty-seventh and received their full support. Uh, in addition, I received sixteen letters of support from Director Butters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, Counselor Savi George's office, would like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We have, uh, one letter of opposition and about ten letters of support.
Thank you. Um, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, motion to approve BPDA designer review.
Thank you. Is it a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, I noticed, Hansi, that you are on. And I notice, Eric, that you two are on. I don't know, is Jean on? No. Um, we had hoped to have, uh, uh, an end-of-year conversation with you, Eric, with you, Hansi, and all board members. Uh, but it looks like this meeting is going to run pretty late. Um, so I don't know if, uh, you two and perhaps the rest of the board is available for perhaps a forty-five-minute conversation. Um, next week, I think I penciled in next week at ten. Uh, because, uh, just because I want, before the new year sets in, for the current board members, the alternates, to meet, uh, everybody, everybody else who has been approved by city council, so we can go ahead and start the new year fresh. So, Eric, uh, yeah, you guys available? And I know that you, uh, Ligris, you have to run for three o'clock. So I just wanna make sure that we all get a chance to talk before the year's end.
Hi, Madam Chair. I am available on the tenth, this Thursday. Is that what you were asking for?
Um, I think I was looking at Tuesday, just because we generally meet on Tuesdays. Um, so Tuesday at ten, um, is that available? Eric, are you also available then?
Yes.
I am available.
That works for me.
Okay, so let's, uh, and, uh, and, uh, and all the board members who are at this meeting, please, um, make sure you're on it. And, um, can I ask Kevin if you can set it up, okay? That would be fantastic. Thank you so much, guys. Uh, sorry to hear you're running late.
No worries. Bye-bye, thanks.
Bye.
We're gonna call the next case, calling BOA one zero zero four six seven two two forty-nine Corey Road. This is a change of occupancy from nursing home to a multi-family residential. Direct forty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-four square feet. Four-story, thirty-four-unit building and basement with thirty-three parking spaces. The violation is Article fifty-one, section eight, a multi-family dwelling uses forbidden use. Building is a forbidden. Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-one, section nine, the height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the front yard setback on Jordan Street is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-seven point two, the front motor alignment of Corey Road, lock is not met. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street loading is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section fifty-seven point three, the traffic, traffic visibility across the corner. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, Attorney Joe Hanley McDermott, Coltia Miller, twenty-eight State Street in Boston. Here on behalf of, uh, the proponent, Jeff Fuhrman, uh, Brookline Development Corp., who's also on the line. Also with me is the project architect, Niti John, from Prolic Chalinski Architects. Um, just briefly to give you the details, Madam Chair, if I may. Um, this site is, uh, approximately seventeen thousand nine hundred and fifty-two square-foot lot at two forty-nine Corey Road in Brighton, uh, towards the top of, uh, the hill at the intersection of Jordan Road and Corey. Uh, there is a thirty-foot grade change, uh, in this site, which you'll see in the presentation. What is being proposed, um, is to, uh, remove a existing non-conforming structure, which was formerly the Corey Nursing Home building on this oversized lot, uh, in the two F five thousand zone, with a new residential development of four stories for thirty-four residential units with thirty-three parking spaces. Um, I will note, too, that, uh, the bedroom counts for these, uh, these is, of these thirty-two, thirty-four, um, units, a majority of them are two-bedroom units and they are nearly a thousand square feet. So they are intended to, uh, provide options for, uh, young families and generously-sized two-bedrooms. There are sixteen one-bedrooms that are up to eight hundred square feet and no studios whatsoever. Um, there's also almost eight thousand square feet of open space, which includes a seventeen, uh, seventeen, I'm sorry, eight thousand square feet of open space, which includes a seventeen hundred square-foot, uh, rear courtyard as well as fifteen hundred square feet of roof terrace spaces. Um, the secretary read into the record of the zoning. Uh, we also had a very good outreach with the community. And so what you're seeing is-
Joe, uh, so before, we can rely on this, on the city to tell us about the community process. Um, we rely on you for the technical piece. So tell us about the parking, because that, you have a violation on parking?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, this, this, uh, we have point nine seven spaces, which is essentially one per unit. Um, and those are all garage spaces that are, uh, and that have a driveway off Jordan Road, uh, which is as far away from the intersection of Corey. And that's something that was carefully developed with BTD and the- And that's something that was carefully developed with BTD and the BPDA through the Article 80 process. We actually came in with more parking than that, Madam Chair. Uh, and the community and the city, um, through the BPDA, had asked us to adjust the parking down. We think that one per, uh, per unit, uh, is sufficient. We would have liked a little more. Um, we're also needing relief to have some tandem spaces, which you'll see on the plan. Not all tandem spaces, just that small section towards the middle top that you see down in the plan on the right. Um, and those, we would be, um, I did, you know, typically, those would be provided for those tent, two-bedroom units, where, let's say, a family or a couple would have two cars, uh, and they would each have a tandem space, or they would each have a space.
So tell us about, tell us about the roof terrace. Who is that accessible to?
So, the, um, the, the roof terrace is 1,500 square feet. It's common to the building. Um, but the way, Mr. Fierman has several, uh, very high-quality, long-term tenant rental buildings in Brighton. And, uh, the way they work on this is, and it's kind of COVID-reflective, if you will, where they're, they're broken into, uh, movable sections and, uh, reserved for folks in the buildings. So, listening to you, Madam Chair, and the members of the board about good-sized units, it's also important that folks have open space, uh, on the development. So we're pretty proud of that roof space. And if you look at the back...
Hold on, hold on, Joe.
I'm sorry.
Uh, Collard, can you please show us the, um, the roof, um, the, the roof terrace? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Henley.
Yeah, um, and the other, um, because we are seeking relief, um, for the rear yard, um, is, is the courtyard at the rear, which you'll see on the landscape plan, um, which I believe is a few clicks down from where you are right now. And that space is approximately 1,500 square feet. A pretty lush, um, you know, uh, bluestone courtyard sort of patio space that is also accessible off the units, uh, in the rear. So I think if you keep going down, Nitti, uh, on this... Sorry. I'm on mine two here. If you can, if you go down, you'll see the landscape plan is page...
This is, this is a different presentation.
Or maybe there's not a landscape plan in there.
So, um...
Okay, so it's in the rear left corner. Yep.
Because I was just curious to see how you, uh, blocked out the roof terrace so that there were, um, you know, mods over, you know, uh, split-off spaces.
Yep.
We, we don't show the details of it. We made sure that the roof terrace, the edge was set further back, Joe. The plan doesn't show that detail.
And so...
But the way, the way they do that, Madam Chair, and Jeff Fierman can talk about it, is to use, uh, uh, planters and bollards that are movable. And...
Yep.
I'm sorry.
We were trying to do a modular system where...
Correct. Everything's kind of in play with COVID, Madam Chair.
And this is, and this is going to be a, proposed to be a rental, then?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good-sized units, but rental.
Okay, um, Mr. Ehrlich, how are the plans?
Uh, the drawing's very nice. Uh, my only question is, uh, context. This seems like a, uh, uh, surprisingly large project in the middle of a neighborhood that is mostly, um, you know, small, two or three, smaller, multifamily.
Yeah, so, uh, Mr. Ehrlich, a cou- couple kind of mitigating aspects here. One is, obviously, it's a, as you noted, it's a 2F5000. Uh, and there are around it certain, you know, uh, two, you know, two families and singles. But they all tend to be on smaller lots. Where, of course, an existing non-conforming, uh, structure that was the nursing home. But there are also two other lots immediately next to us, um, on Jordan Road that are in Brookline, that are also owned by the developer. And that helps to, you know, further buffer that. The other thing is with a 30-foot grade change, if you look at the front, uh, photo of the site, um, it all goes up towards the back. And so what we did with the architecture is we took, uh, the building and kind of set it into the grade. And then the third level, uh, steps back to the fourth level, if you will. And that helps to kind of mitigate and put it into context. And I think Nitti has, at the end of that presentation, you know, there are a few, uh, renderings that show how it then begins to comport, considering the undulation of the site.
Okay, so, um, is there a grade change between? No, I guess there isn't. So, all the grade change is on this property in Brighton. Um, the, uh, Brookline lots are still on grade? Or are they fairly, uh, uh, level?
So it, it, it undulates, Madam Chair. It goes, Cory Road goes up. And we're, we're towards the climb, right? And that's the 30-foot.
Does Jordan go up or down?
Yes, Jordan then goes up again. So that's the undulating. And so that's why it was so important for us to move the vehicular entrance. Uh, and we also created a separate ingress space for Amazon and Uber and Lyft and all that, as far away from that intersection, because it becomes down towards the intersection. It sort of drops down into a little ravine, if you will. So it's a very unique property.
And so, and so this is on a separate lot from the Brookline lots?
Yes, ma'am.
Because if the developer should go ahead and develop the second, those other lots, um, we just want to make sure that this, this project sits on its own bottom.
Yes, ma'am.
That there isn't, um, you know, shared parking or double parking.
Not at all. And, and I just mentioned that to Mr. Ehrlich to give context of the characteristics around us and how we fit in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to record support of this proposal. Uh, it was, a robust community process was conducted by the BPDA. Uh, there were two public meetings, uh, one before the pandemic in person at the Brighton Marine. And then another, uh, the most recent was September 24th of 2020. Uh, they also met with the Brighton Alston Improvement several ti- Alston Brighton Improvement Association several times, uh, where they scaled back the building away from, uh, from neighbors. Uh, they worked closely in creating that other egress specifically for delivery vehicles and Ubers and addressed a lot of concerns of the neighborhood. Uh, we think it's a great opportunity to transition this parcel, which has been a disused nursing home for a while, to, uh, quality residential units. Thank you.
Hi there, this is Jennifer Goldsmith from the community, uh, in support. Is this the moment that I should speak?
Jennifer, are you in Alston, Brighton?
No, I'm the butter on Jordan Road.
Okay. Okay, um, go ahead. Your name and address, please.
Sure, Jennifer Goldsmith, 148 Jordan Road. So I live in the house that abuts the two Brookline lots. So, you know, next to the, next to the new building. And I, I just want to comment both that Mr. Furman and his team have met multiple times with the community. And we, Brookline and Alston Brighton have met together with him. We don't sort of see a big dividing line. We live continuous to one another. And we've been appreciative of the number of changes that have been made in response to our concerns about height and about traffic patterns. And I think it's also worth mentioning that, while these renderings show single-family homes like the one that I live in, it's a very mixed neighborhood in that the number five Washington project is two blocks away. Winchester is two blocks away with a number of three- or four-story brick buildings. So this isn't so out of character. And, um, given that it's going to be built and it's been an inactive nursing home, we feel like, and I have neighbors and I who have signed a letter to this effect, that this is a reasonable use and, um, a responsible, uh, response to the community's concerns. And, um...
Thank you. May I, may I, Moira, please?
Okay, great.
Moira?
Maureen, what I... One second. Okay. Ma- Maureen, you've been unmuted?
Good afternoon, my name is Maureen McCrave. I'm from Councilor Breeden's office. We'd like to speak in support of this project. We appreciate the proponents' willingness to work with community members and incorporate their feedback into their design.
Annabelle? Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Karen Foley, uh, City Council in East West Ivy George's office. Would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Annabelle?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joel, Kenny, please?
Yep. Joel, you've been unmuted?
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Joel Kenny. Together with my wife, we own 248, 250 Cory Road. We live directly across the street from this project. We'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Thank you. Paul Sullivan?
Sorry. One second, Paul, you're all set.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan. On behalf of City Council, I'm the authority. Council would go on record in support, uh, as well as, uh, go on record in support for 143 Dent Street, the last project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, given that information, may I have a...
Secretary, Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have two letters of opposition.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
We're all set. Good luck.
On the 12:30 rediscussion, calling BOA 111-8027-135 Athens Street. This is to install a roof deck. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. Installation of a private roof deck on a lower roof. Roof structure restrictions. Name and address, for the record, please.
Michael Blute, I'm the architect, working with the homeowner to, um, put together the expansion drawings for the deck. Well, my address is 40 Wannabe Road, Milton, Mass.
And is this existing?
This deck was built in, uh, 2019, uh, 2018. Um, the, the original deck was, there was an original deck, uh, on the roof of a, that was 115 square feet. Um, we're proposing, we're trying to make corrections to that deck that was built in 2018, uh, as an expansion and bring it up to code.
So was it built with, with adequate, um, with, with adequate permits?
Uh, no, it was not. It was a, it was a miscommunication between the homeowners association, the owner, and the contractor.
And was this, did this project for its initial construction come before this board?
I believe so, yeah. I, I believe that it was required to come in front of the board. I, I was not involved in the project at that time.
But do, during your due diligence, did you find out if there were any restrictions on this, this construction about roof decks or headhouses or hatches or anything like that?
No, the homeowner had exclusive use of the, of this area of the roof. The only restrictions that I'm aware of were zoning, uh, zoning restrictions and then building code restrictions.
And what's the access to this space?
Uh, there, this, this floor is a penthouse level. It's one level below the main roof, roof of the building. Um, and this deck is dedicated to just the homeowner's use.
So it's a penthouse unit? It's not accessed by a penthouse?
So I would, I'm the owner, maybe I could comment on that. Hello?
No, I, I, no, 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 please, hold on. Uh, Mr. Ehrlich, can you please help clarify?
Well, actually, I can't because I wasn't given the plans for a preview. So I'm looking at, at the drawings right now. So, is, so you're saying this is a penthouse deck that you step out to?
Exactly. So the original deck is on, the drawing we're looking at is the red box on the left-hand side. The deck was expanded out to the dotted line, which extends over towards the left-hand side of the roof. It is dedicated to one unit on the roof, uh, the penthouse.
All right, so, so it's a step-out, uh, deck, so that's fine. But, um, you said it had to be code-compliant. Why was the original deck not code-compliant?
Uh, the, the problem with the original deck was that, when it was constructed, uh, it didn't have any tie-down devices in terms of storm uplift. And then also, the loading on the, the roof, um, was inadequately distributed. And the, the new design, the revisions to the deck, uh, incorporate, uh, distribution of that load across the roof.
Okay.
It's, it's certainly a much, it looks like, uh, four times as big, right?
Yeah, well, it went from 115 and then the proposed deck, uh, the adjusted and corrected deck will be 534.
So it's almost five, yeah, almost five times, this is large, okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal? Is anybody here to speak in opposition to this proposal?
Madam chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Councilor Breeden's office. Please note, we are not necessarily opposed to the project. We appreciate the owners' willingness to reach out and engage our office. We get any questions, concerns? We had on the proposal, at the same time, as roof decks might also be a concern for the same district, lower-end neighborhood association, as well as neighbors in the area. We'd like to see a little further engagement with the community on this issue before proceeding. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Joel Carpenter with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of my colleague, Kaylee Dillon, who would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We have two letters of support.
May I have a motion, please?
Uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but I'm gonna ask for BPDA design review, because this is a strong, bold increase in the size of the deck. And I think that the, uh, it, it would benefit from, from being reviewed for, for the scale.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, are you ready to, the 1:00 clock, Madam Chair?
Yes, we're just only, almost two hours behind.
Madam, Madam Chair, I'm gonna need to step on record, um, for a, for a work call.
So, Mr. Ligris, uh, so Ligris, how long do you think you'll be done?
Um, at least 20 or 30 minutes. I'll return as soon as I'm, as soon as I'm done.
Thank you.
On the first case for rediscussion, calling BOA 961-465-3637, Monmouth Street. This is a change of occupancy from two-to-four unit residential. Renovate, erected ditched with headhouse and roof deck. The violation is Article 53, Section 9. The four-family dwelling is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9. The floor area ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9. The height is excessive in feet. Article 53, Section 9. The height is excessive in stories. Article 53, Section 9. Side yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9. Rear yard setback is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56. Off-street parking is insufficient. And Article 2017-T-5, this is in the East Boston I-Pod. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, uh, we're back before the board for rediscussion after a deferral that has resulted in some changes to this project, uh, which I do have and I believe the board has as well, uh, several of which would have eliminated some of the variances that were being requested. Uh, as the secretary indicated, this is a pre-existing two-family dwelling. It's located in Eagle Hill, section of East Boston. Our proposal, uh, would involve the complete rehabilitation of the interior of this building. While the exterior is in somewhat good condition, uh, we propose, obviously, to preserve the existing structure. Uh, we will also make some improvements consistent with the guidelines and suggestions of the Eagle Hill Civic Association standards that they have of the Eagle Hill Civic Association standards that they have for properties in Eagle Hill. I want to highlight for the board a couple of the changes that we've made when, once we heard opposition from direct abutters.
So, so, Council, can you just tell us what is being proposed? I'm not kind of interested in the changes. I'm interested in what the zoning requires and what you're proposing.
Sure. So, this is a 2F 2000 district, while the lot and pre-existing use would be conforming, we're proposing to make changes that would result in several dimensional violations as well as the use. The proposed use would be four units versus the two units. And again, this would result, this would be the result of a small addition to the rear, which would be two-story total, and a small addition to the existing third level, which presently doesn't go all the way back to the rear portion of the property. Originally, this proposal involved a full third level plus roof deck and headhouse. The complete extension of the third level has been eliminated in order to address concerns of the direct abutters on the left, who has indicated they're satisfied with the changes that we've made.
Okay, so tell us the unit breakdown. Is there occupancy in the basement?
No occupancy in the basement is proposed. All of the living would be on levels one, two, and the half-level, the third. One of the units is a two-bedroom plus, and the others are all one-bedroom, all one-bath.
And average square feet for the one-bedrooms?
About 630 square feet for the one, and it's about a little over 1,000 square feet for the two-bedroom plus.
And then you're proposing a roof deck? Tell us about that.
So the roof deck would actually be above the second-level addition. We're not proposing any roof deck above the third level. So we don't access from the rear of the existing, I guess, half-level of the third level.
And, but it says it's accessed with a headhouse?
That was the original, I think the description has remained the same, Madam Chair. But that headhouse, since our last hearing, both the headhouse and the roof deck above the third level have been eliminated. If we can go to the elevation, I believe it's the next, I believe it would be the next screen, and we're showing existing conditions there. There we go. So as you can see from the profile here, we're looking at the front of the building as well as the left side of the building. The addition now on the top level only goes back about five feet. And there is a roof deck that would sit above the second level, no longer above the third level. Again, this is to address specific issues that we heard from abutters regarding a view corridor that would allow, or at least allow continued view to the city skyline.
How are the parts, Mr. Olick?
Well, the drawings are adequate. The drawings reflect the changes that Mr. Lins is referring to.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
The number one, Madam Chair, members of the board, we are familiar with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support. During the community process, the Office of Neighborhood Services held three parties meetings where the applicant addressed several of their concerns. We also received two letters of support from direct abutters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Councilor Ricardo Patron from Councilor Edward's office would also like to go on record to support. They're having issues getting back into WebEx, but they did send an email.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have two letters of support, one letter of opposition.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BDDA design review.
Oh, second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And have a good holiday, Madam Chair, members of the board.
See you in the new year.
Yes.
On the next two cases, calling BOA 975-065-7 Beaver Places. There's also a companion case, the building code, 99, BOA 999900, 7 Beaver Place. This is to correct and unsafe remove the front facade of the building and structural elements. The violation is Article 13, 13-1, insufficient rail yard setback. Article 32, Section 4, this is in the G-card. And for building code, we have the ninth addition, 780 CMI, Chapter 7, Section 705.8, exterior wall openings proposed. Three feet from the lot line is not permitted. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Payne, 173 Norfolk Ave, Roxbury, Mass. Also on this call today is the, is the homeowner here, David Trust, and CBT Architects, Dan Jello-Romini, and Alfred Wojewski, Harry Burles, and Chris Erickson from McPhail Geotechnical Engineers, and Jeff Lewis from Boston Coastal Consulting Civil Engineers, and Mark Berthume from Edinburgh Toreg Attorney.
So, you know, as is usually our case, we deal with the building code violation first before going to the essence of the case. So tell us about the building code violation. Are you still requesting that, those, the relief from the building code?
Yes. The rear wall is still in place, as it has been all along. We, we have left it in place. It's got two portals, two wide-open masonry portals. We are proposing building a wall inside that, that has, that is a, that's a fire-rated wall with inoperable glazing in, in line with those portals.
Okay. So if, so, so you are still continuing to request building code relief, then?
Yes.
Is this building proposed to be sprinkled, sprinkled in any way?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mr. Olick, please, does that respond to the, to this request, or this response to the building code?
Well, I mean, we, as, as you said, we, except for in the case of headhouses and hatches, we never grant building code relief. And I'm reluctant to do so in this situation. There are, there are other alternatives routes that the applicant has, but I don't think that we should break the precedent.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to deny building code relief.
Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's get to the meat of the case.
Madam Chair, would you like to get G-card out of the way here?
Yes. Christian, please go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. While we do have the BWSC approval and no harm letters from the applicant, I would request a hold for signature at this time. My reasoning behind that is that it's my understanding that there's been ongoing discussions between the proponent and some of abutters, and there needs to be a modification to the approved groundwater recharge system. So therefore, we would need a new set of plans. And with the new set of plans would come a new Boston Water and Sewer Approval Letter highlighting those changes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have the no-harm letter as well.
Thank you. So, please, Mr. Payne and team, tell us what's being proposed and why you're before us.
We are, we're before you because we thought we were doing a buy-right renovation. And at some point, ISD were deep into this with all sorts of short-form permits for various aspects of this. ISD said, oh, well, this isn't, this isn't a renovation, this is new construction. So we, anyway, the existing rear wall.
So tell us what's, what was, what was on the site and what you're proposing as your final product.
There was a single-family residence with a garage at street level, and we are proposing a, a single-family residence with a garage at street level and a, and a parking lift that puts, that allows for one below-ground parking space as well.
Okay. What is the best sheet that we should be looking at so that collect can get through, so we can see what this proposed building looks like?
Do I have control of this to scroll?
No, you do not. But tell us what the sheet is that we should be looking at to give us the best story.
Okay, well, I'm gonna defer to, to Dan from CBT to answer that question.
Sure.
Put your name and address on the record and tell us then what we need to do here.
Sure. Dan Jello-Romini from CBT Architects, 110 Canal Street, Boston.
Okay.
So we can go to the plans. If you go to the first floor, A100. We scroll.
Sorry, guys, this is a little bit slow just because of the pages.
I can, I can take you through the intent while you get to the page. So the intent is to build, rebuild the home.
Can I just say the 4153 is A201, if you want to?
Forty-one? Okay. In the meantime, Daniel, go ahead.
Sure, thank you. The intent is to rebuild the home to the exact envelope and dimensions that it previously existed. We had done some demolition to correct some deficiencies in the structure and the water proofing. And so what we're doing is we're, we're, we're attempting to rebuild the home. The square footage will remain the same, the gross square footage. Here we go. So the basement level here is below grade parking. There's mechanical space, utility space, and laundry on the basement level. We scroll to the next page. Level one remains largely the same as well. It is level one parking. So there's a garage on the first floor, there's a foyer, and an entry and stairs that take you up to the main living space, which is level two. Go to level two.
Go ahead, Colton.
There's kitchen, master bedroom, and dining area.
Sorry, it's kind of freezing on me. I think it's the amount of pages, so I might just be a tiny bit behind when you're speaking. Sorry about that.
No problem. Got it.
In the third floor, remains the same. There'll be a den area and a roof deck.
So how long was it occupied as a single family?
I don't really know. Decades. Our, our client is not the first one to occupy it as a single family.
So it's always been taxed as a single family?
That's correct.
I don't know about always. I mean, I, I-
Okay, so as, as much as you know, it's been taxed as a single family?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And, and Daniel, as you said, you maintain the envelope. You're going to still have a garage door that will allow you to drop a car into the basement. And you will have a, a car on that, that level two?
Correct.
Okay, so two-car garage. Will you have a roof deck?
There will be, there's previously a deck on three, and we're planning to reconstruct it to the same extent it previously existed.
Okay.
So, you know, in large part, the exterior and the interior is remaining identical to what was previously there.
Okay. Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Olick?
The plans are thorough. They're, they're fine.
Okay. So, and then why, so let's see, what was Christian referring to? I know we have to hold it for signature, but what discussions might result in you changing the location of your system, your recharge system?
I'd like actually to have Jeff Lewis, our civil engineer, answer it because he can obviously be more accurate and more detailed in the explanation. Jeffrey, are you available?
Yes. Based on the, based on the comments from the abutters, we've moved the system to the center of the building, of 7 Beaver Place. We've also addressed the overflow and put a drain out in the street so the overflow will drain out of Catch Basin. So those plans will be resubmitted to Boston Water and Sewer. We've been in contact with both them and Christian on this to get final approval from Boston Water and Sewer on these.
Okay. Okay, let's see. How, and so, Mark, did I ask you how the plans were?
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Can I raise your hands?
Are you speaking in support?
Second, Mr. Whitney.
Yeah, Rob Whitney, yes. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to unmute. This is Robert Whitney. I'm the chair of the Beacon Hill Civic Association. I wanted to note that the, we are speaking in support of the requested zoning relief. We had three meetings of our zoning and licensing committee, and after lots of discussion, we determined to not oppose the requested zoning relief. Thank you.
Jonathan Lane is also, you've been unmuted. Your panelists, Jonathan, go ahead. Hi, Jonathan. Might have stepped away. Sorry. I also have David and Andrew Trust. Hi, David, you've been unmuted. This is the board. May I speak?
Yes. This is Shanice Pimental from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proposal has participated in an extensive community process, and at this time, there is substantial opposition on record. This property abuts the Park Street School on Beacon Hill. We have received many letters of opposition from parents of students at the school who are concerned about the safety of the school's property in regards to the groundwater infiltration. As Christian Semenelli stated, the Mayor's Office would like to see an updated approval letter from the Boston Water and Sewer Commission. The other notable concern expressed by abutters was a potential discrepancy in the FAR calculated inspection services. However, after multiple meetings with the Beacon Hill Civic Association, the proposal itself, which includes some revision, revisions detailed in the letter submitted by the association, received the vote of non-opposition. We are appreciative of the considerate efforts that the applicant has made to communicate with the abutters outside of the required community process. Given this information, the Mayor's Office would like to, would like to see resolutions to the concerns of groundwater infiltration and FAR. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have numerous letters of opposition and two letters of support.
So from what I can understand is that, what is, what is the name of the school again up there on?
The Park Street School.
So the Park Street School is concerned about the groundwater inf, the groundwater infiltration system affecting their building. Is that what I can understand is the bottom line?
I believe the abutters just have issues because the plans reflected something different. There was updated plans for the groundwater infiltration, and they just want the plans to be submitted to Boston Water and Sewer Commission and for that, for those, the updated plans to be approved by them. I believe they haven't done so yet.
Okay, so as I understand, as I understand it then, it's the ground, since it's just a simple one-family dwelling, the, the, the groundwater system, whatever it may end up being, and where it might end up being located, is what's of interest to the Park Street School. And the second is that FAR, but it looks like the FAR has, for the most part, been resolved because I just can't see that there would be significant discrepancy between the ISD calculations and anything else.
Yes, I agree with that, Madam Chair.
Okay, so-
Could you say clarification if the Mayor's Office was in support or opposition? Because she went out, she went mute.
Sorry, sorry about that. I was running out of breath. We are actually in support of the proposal, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here to speak from City Councilor's office? Either in support or in opposition? Is there anybody online representing Kenzie Bach, or does the counselor just want to remain silent on this one? Okay. May I hear from Mr. Mills? Ms. Ambassador, are you having issues?
Madam Chair, I'll try to take the host role back from Ms. Ambassador while she's getting her issues resolved.
Okay.
Yeah, Jessica, she actually can't hear anyone right now, so she's just, she's working on it.
Okay. Can I hear from Mr. Mills, Don Mills?
You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Yes, I'm Don Mills. I'm an architect. I'm representing Park Street School at 63 to 69 Brimmer Street. Can you hear me fine, Madam Chair?
Yes, please tell us what your support or opposition is based on.
The school has received over 160 letters of opposition sent to the ZBA from parents, from abutters, from staff members of the school.
All I want to know is that this is a one-family with two parking spaces. We understand that the groundwater system needs to be finalized. So this is really what we're looking at. What is the school's opposition on, on these violations that are actually the ones that are in front of us?
Madam Chair, we support the denial of the building code violation. Madam Chair, we support the denial of the building code violation. We support the change to the G-Cod and resubmission. And, uh, there have been discussions with the neighborhood and the school whereby the plans were changed. The architect mentioned earlier that the interior is being built exactly as it was. That's true in terms of the discussions we've had, but not true in terms of the plans that are before you. The difference between the plans that are before you and what the, uh, applicant has promised to the neighborhood is that they've agreed to do a sloping rear roof on the third floor instead of a full-height third floor, as these plans represent. So, uh, our understanding is that they need to submit revised plans with revised FAR calculations to ISD before this can move forward.
Okay, um, so this, how does, okay, so you are requesting a sloping rear roof at the top of the, at the topmost floor?
Correct, to replicate the prior building envelope.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, so you're, um, let's see, so Park Street is in support of the B, of the denial of building code relief? You understand the need for revised plans for the groundwater system? And, um, you are interested in the slope of the rear roof? And that takes care of everything. Okay, is there anybody else who's, um, thank you, Mr. Mills, is there anybody else who needs to speak?
Uh, Madam Chair, I believe the other two raised hands that I see, um, spoke, David Andrew Trust and Robert Whitney.
Okay.
I see in the chat that, uh, Lauren Brody wrote that John Spillane from Council Box Office is unable to speak. I'm searching for him, but I don't see his name on anywhere where I'd be able to unmute him.
Okay, so he sits in, in the chat, and by you, uh, uh, reading it out loud, it's in the record. So we, and, um, but-
Chair, if it's support or opposition.
So, yes, exactly, uh, can we get a sense from Lauren Brody if he's in support, if the counselor is in support or in opposition? In the meantime, uh, may I have a response from, um, the applicant who ever chooses to respond? Because I understood that the envelope was supposed to stay exactly the same. Can you respond to the sloping rear roof thing?
Yeah, it is absolutely our intent to do the sloped rear roof that will match the roof line at eleven and the previous roof line at seven.
So, um, is that reflected in the drawings that are, uh, in front of the board, and which page is it on?
We, we haven't resubmitted the, uh, the rear sloped roof.
Madam, Madam Chair, can I make a suggestion? There seem to be, uh, a note between the, the groundwater issue, between the building envelope, the sloped roof, and between the building code relief, which will require some redesign. It sounds to me like a deferral might be in order, because they've got some-
I'd actually like to, um, surface all the issues and hold everything for signature until we get the revised drawings. Because, um, this, this has, um, taken up a lot of space, a lot of time. And so I'd like to have a decision made by us. We can hold for signature until we get water and sewer, and hold for signature until we get the revised drawings, and we have an understanding that the applicant has in fact touched base with the Butters. Okay?
Excuse me, excuse me, Chairwoman.
May I, may I hear from Lauren Brody on, uh, what is happening with Counselor Bach, and is she in support or in opposition?
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board, are you able to hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I apologize for all the technical difficulties. Uh, Counselor Bach's position is in alignment with the Boston Groundwater Trust to request the ZBA hold its signatures on any approval on Seven Beaver Place pending the submission of updated plans in regard to its groundwater management systems and an associated updated approval from BWSC. Our office has received extensive communications from neighbors and Butters concerned about the groundwater management systems proposed in the filed plans and their impacts for adjacent properties. Additionally, our office is grateful to the proponents for adjustments in their plans in order to restore the slanted roof line of the prior building and relocate HVAC systems to the second rather than third floor deck, and hope to see those plans submitted as well. Our office is also aware of potential fire code issue regarding the rear windows. However, the counselor is not well versed in this matter to weigh in, but asked the board to review this matter as well. That's Counselor Bach's statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so, um, so, may I have a motion, please?
I, I, I'll, I'll make a motion. I, I just want to make it clear, though, that this is, this is an exception, this is not usually what we do.
Yeah.
Usually you come prepared, especially after being deferred already. But I'll make a motion to approve, hold for signature for, um, for, uh, some groundwater trust. And then plans to approve.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat the motion? I couldn't hear it with the phone going off.
Mo- mo- motion to approve, hold for signature for the dated groundwater system. And, uh, plans with the sloped roof.
Is there a second?
In design review.
Is, uh, is, I'm not sure Beacon Hill, uh, they, I don't think this might be, this might not be subject to design review. But may I have a second, please?
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm sorry, did somebody second this?
Second, Tyrone.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, I think there's way too many things that are unresolved.
Okay, motion carries. Because there are five in support. So just know that this is not, to the applicant, just know that this is not going anywhere until we get all these pieces in place, and we are assured that groundwater is taken care of, and that we understand what that roof, uh, design is going to look like. Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one zero four six two four four, thirty-three oh five to thirty-three oh seven, Washington Street. This to combine existing lots twenty-two fifty-seven, lot twenty-two fifty-eight, it's a one nine thousand three hundred and seventy-eight square foot lot. Addition renovation to create four-story mixed-use building. Change Oxford's office to one apartment and intern overnight accommodation to a commercial space. Multi-family dwelling, fourteen units and garage, twelve vehicles. Upper floor units will have individual roof decks. Evaluation, Article fifty-five, section forty, off-street parking is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section forty, off-street loading is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section forty point five A, off-street parking design and maneuverability. Article fifty-five, section forty-one, conforming with the existing building alignment. Article fifty-five, section eight, multi-family dwelling is forbidden. Article fifty-five, section eight, the commercial space is forbidden. Article fifty-five, section eight, accessory parking is forbidden. Article fifty-five, section nine, the laundry area position drawing units is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section nine, the floor area ratio is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, the building height number of stories is excessive. Article fifty-five, section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section nine, front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-five, section nine, side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-five, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Tim Johnson, architect, five ninety-nine East Broadway, Boston, with my client, Brian Merkland. I'm Madam Chair, members of the board. This project was before the board this past March. An addition renovation to create fifteen residential units, one commercial with eight parking spaces. At that time, the board felt the project was too dense and gave us the opportunity to defer. Subsequently, on April seventh, the BPDA gave the project team a building program of nine residential units and one commercial unit for the site. Out of, out of respect for the Jamaica Plain Civic Associations, we asked the BPDA for a tenth affordable unit, and they agreed. Therefore, the project before the board is an addition renovation to create ten residential units, one commercial unit, and ten parking spaces, combined two lots. The existing Victorian building will be largely preserved and renovated into four duplex units. The sixth unit addition will occupy the vacant parcel to the left of the existing building. This is a corner lot, so the ten parking spaces will be accessed via Ophir Street. This project has support from the Director Butters?
So, I'm sorry, um, so this is, um, tell us which drawing we should look at. So I'm seeing, this is the corner of, of-
Ophir and Washington Street, Madam Chair. If you scroll to the next drawing.
Please scroll down, Colette. Okay, thank you.
This is a Victorian building that will be largely kept, kept intact, Madam Chair. This will be the four duplex units. And then the addition to the left on the vacant parcel will be the six flats with the commercial unit at the grid.
Okay, and tell us how parking, um, is going to work?
If we could scroll down a few more three-D views to the site plan, please? Next one, please? Thank you. So you can see Ophir Street on the right. We have an existing curb cut where we'll access eight garage parking spaces, and this isn't the site plan, so two off-street parking spaces were cut off at the top. So there'll be ten spaces, uh, provided, Madam Chair.
Okay, and are there roof decks on the addition or on the second building?
There are, Madam Chair, they're dedicated to the top units, and they're accessed via bulkheads with roof doors.
Okay. Um, Mr. Olick, how are the plans?
Your plans are really good.
Okay, any questions from the board?
I, I have a comment. Glad to see you went with ten with one of four, I think that nine would have been a sad thing, and I'm glad to see you did that, so I want to commend that.
Yes, we were seeing a lot of, a lot of nines, weren't we? Is, um, anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe Carpenter with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On behalf of my colleague Lindsay Santana, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we have seventeen letters of support, one letter of opposition.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Madam Chair, this is Jeff Yenton from the BPDA. Uh, I would like to echo Tim Johnson's, uh, comments that the BPDA is in support of this redesign. Last, uh, time that they had their hearing, we were against this proposal, but I can confirm that the BPDA is in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Karen Foley, Counselor Sabi Georgi's office, like to go on record in support. Thank you.
So, Tim, I'd like to ask if there's any occupancy in the basement of the existing Victorian?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, this was in the pipeline before, uh, the board was adamantly opposed to bedrooms in the basement. Uh, we do have bedrooms in the basement of the existing house, and we're more than happy to relocate those to the first floor.
And so, Colette, can you pull those up? Um, so how many bedrooms are in that basement?
Uh, there's, th- these are the duplex units, so one bedroom in each unit is in the lower level.
Okay, okay, okay. Um, so given that information, um, and given the fact of the new construction being, um, so close to this Victorian, may I have a motion, please?
I, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, with BPDA design review. Especially on the addition part, maybe like a manside roof or something to make it look more with everything else, but a motion.
And then, um, no, no bedrooms in the basement?
Yeah, no bedroom, and relocate the bedrooms out of the basement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're gonna take like a ten-minute break? Because I want to make sure that, um, Mr. Costas is on for the rest of our conversation. Mr. Legras is on for the rest of our-
Madam Chair, Madam Chair?
Yeah?
Before we go any further, is Perrin Street on, uh, Madam Ambassador, because I have it in my records that they're gonna be deferring?
Yes, Thomas will be on. Tom?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are you moving forward on your project?
Tom, has he been unmuted? Mr. Rivero?
Are you gonna make moving forward on your project? Are you deferring, sir?
I would like to defer, we're gonna downscale from four units with a four-car garage to three units with a three-car garage.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Hold on.
No longer see any bedroom.
Mr. Rivero, stop. Uh, may I have a motion for deferral?
Make a motion for deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the date, please?
You'll have a date of March twenty-third at twelve-thirty.
Okay. Does that take care of everything?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I gotta read them into the record, I just, I'm beginning to tell myself. For the two, for the two cases for Perrin Street, BOA one zero two three two six two twenty-six twenty-eight Perrin Street, and BOA one zero two three two six five twenty-six, uh, Perrin Street, into the record. Thank you.
Thank you, so we can take our break now? Okay, we're gonna take, uh, fifteen-
March twenty-third was the date, Madam Chair, as I said.
Twenty-third at twelve-thirty, so, um, we're gonna take a ten-minute break, and we will resume precisely at three forty. Please, uh, keep an eye out for, um, Costa so that we can, um, uh, proceed when he gets on, and that he doesn't assume we're done. Appeal for, um, December eighth is back in session. Um, Mr. Fortune, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Only the next two cases, calling BOA nine seven one two eight seven six forty-three Morton Street. There is a companion case, BOA nine seven one two eight six, six forty-three Morton Street. This is a change of occupancy from childcare center to a three-family dwelling. No work to be done. The violation is Article sixty, section nine. The additional lot area is insufficient. And Madam Chair, we have building code. This is the ninth addition, seven eighty C M R, nine, nine oh three point two. Occupancy of automatic sprinkler requirement. All use group R requires automatic sprinkler system. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Mackenzie and Associates, one eighty-three State Street, uh, Suite Six, Boston. And I just want to say, I've, I've boarded out for dinner and for hotel spaces for you guys. But, uh, this is the longest hearing that I've ever participated in.
So, Mr. Feaster, can you hold on a second? I just want to make sure we have a full, um, a full board here. Yeah, Mr. Fortune, you're here. Mr. Olick, you're here. Mr. Rogirio, are you back?
I'm here.
Perfect. Uh, Mr. Legras, are you back? Uh, Mr. Candel, are you on?
I'm on, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. DeVoe, are you on? Okay, uh, so it looks like we are a six-member board. Please give me a heads up when Mr. Legras joins us again. Go ahead, Mr. Feaster.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, and I want to say hello. It's unfortunate I won't have the pleasure of seeing all of you in person, as particularly the new members of the board who I've, uh, yet to meet, so welcome to the Board of Appeals. Uh, it's a great board, and, uh, I'm happy to be here today. Along with me, uh, is the architect, Michael Washington. Uh, Ms. Thomas, I believe he may be on the phone, if you could, uh, admit him. One of my co-councils who I'm training to take over for me, uh, board members, but, uh, Timothy Fraser is on. The principal person will be speaking with you today, uh, will be Michael Washington. And I know you want to talk about the, uh, building code initially, so let me start there with at least trying to frame it, and see if I can convince the, the board of the reason why we're, uh, still seeking the building code relief. This three-family building is owned by the, uh, by the, a church in, in, in Dorchester. Holy Tabernacle, and they had- And they had, this is a three-family home that they used and converted to a daycare center back in nineteen ninety-six, and it served as a daycare center from nineteen ninety-six to twenty sixteen. From my understanding, some of this was, uh, this may have been more than just during the day, there may have been overnight as well. But if, uh, Siobhan Scott is also on here, Ms. Thomas, uh, so I would have her or possibly, uh, Mr. Washington, it might be better, uh, to elaborate on that particular aspect of it. There has been, and there is now, a very elaborate and intricate alarm system, which I would like them to speak to you on.
So, Mr. Feaster, so is this alarm system related to the automatic sprinkler system? Are you, are you saying to us that that alarm system is in lieu of the sprinkler system?
Well, that's what you, well, see, I, uh, Madame Chair, you've gotten to know me too well over the years. And, uh, yes, what I am attempting to do here is to say that in, that the, the so-called change of loose is a slight change, uh, from, or even a lesser change than what was there previously. And yes, in direct response to your question, I am trying to say that this elaborate alarm system should be, uh, should sub, pen-substitute for the sprinkler system, yes. Uh, a sprinkler system, which by the way, with, uh, we're, yes, in, in keeping with the possibility of the board would not, uh, permit this, is somewhere in the vicinity, I believe, of thirty-something thousand dollars for them to install for, for this three-family.
Okay, so, Mr. Washington, uh, may I have Mr. Wa, Michael Washington on? Mr. Washington, can you tell us, you know, you are a registered architect, um, can you tell us that in fact this is a good, um, a good response to this, um, this request for building code relief?
Okay, I just want to make sure, can you hear me? I'll send you.
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. I thought I missed you. Uh, yes, uh, this is, it's, uh, we've been working on this for years, uh, for the church, and what's happening is, um, the church was changed from a three-family house to, um, daycare. And it came, got to the point where they need to change back, and we only want to change back to a three-family house. There's not any construction necessary.
So, so, Mr. Washington, I, I'm only just completely zeroed in on this request for building code relief because, you know, we take this code relief very seriously. Do not want to be in a position of having people put at risk. Um, so I ask you, with your architect hat on and your knowledge of the building code,
Yes.
whether this is a, a true substitution for an automatic sprinkler system?
Well, when we first came in, we asked for relief on the, uh, sprinkler system, and we've decided that, um, uh, it'd be better to go ahead and put the sprinkler system in now. So we, we're going to, uh, withdraw our requests for, uh, for, um, relief on that, and we're gonna put the sprinkler system in.
Okay, so may I have a motion on the building code for denial?
Motion, building code relief.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, Mr. Feaster?
Well, you see, you learn that the lawyers are the last ones to know these changes.
I know. Can you...
Yeah. I'm still gonna charge for the day, but that's okay.
Okay. And please, the members know that Mr. Feaster was our past chair of the board, um, and so he knows the, uh, the, how the winds change here. So those that, Mr. Feaster, on the, on the occupancy.
Yes, um, I will have Mr. Washington do that as well. The reality is, as, as was indicated, there is not going to be any, uh, any work done on this particular building. The issue here, the zoning violation is, is simply, um, um, let me just see here. The zoning violation is that, um, was, I, for the change of occupancy, is that it was only nine, there was only nine feet, uh, short of what was required for... So, Washington, can you elaborate on this?
Yeah, there are, there are really, there are two, Joe. Uh, one is the number of units that they changed to originally. They changed from three units back to, um, oh, in two-way daycare center, and we will just want to change from a daycare center back to the three units.
Okay.
It's no change of occupancy.
So it's a change of occupancy. So tell us, is there any basement, uh, living?
Basement?
Yeah, is there any rooms, any bedrooms?
There is no living space under it.
Okay, no, nothing in the basement?
That's right.
And, and it looks like this is a fairly typical-looking triple-decker?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Mr. Olick, can you please, how are the plans?
Uh, the plans are fine. There's no work to be done, so it's, uh, this is a very simple, uh, uh, process.
Okay, is anybody, any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Olick, I just want clarification. If there's no work to be done, you're putting a sprinkler system in and an alarm system, so there is work to be done. Am I not correct in saying that?
Well, I suppose that's, I suppose that there's no architectural work to be done. You're right, there's mechanical work to be done.
Yeah, no, right.
Okay.
And I, I would like to just make sure you're aware of one other...
Hold on, Mr. Washington.
One other thing that we were, we, we actually, we think, we thought we needed relief on, and that was the fact that with three families on seventy-five hundred square feet, we were actually nine square feet short of what's required.
Okay. So, um, thank you for putting that on the record, okay? Cause it sounds like it's the lot requirement. Um, so, Mr. Olick, uh, plans are adequate. Uh, we have clarification. Uh, and Mr. Fortune's question, is anybody here to speak in support?
Madame Chair, uh...
Good afternoon, Madame Chair. Whitney Celeston with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I held an abutters meeting for this project. Um, the Wellington Association was present at that, um, abutters meeting. We'd like to go in support of this change of occupancy from the daycare to the three-family, purely because it's adding more housing to the area and it's returning to its old status. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other raised hands.
Uh, Madame Chair, could I, if I might impose one moment? Siobhan Scott, the owner, is on. I don't know.
No, it's, it's all good, Mr. Feaster.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
To approve.
Is there a second?
Second, Tyrone.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Um, um, Mr. Washington, Mr. Feaster, good luck.
Thank, thank you very much. I'll sit tight, I'm the next case.
Okay.
Well, your next case, calling BOA one zero three nine four five seven one R Lorenzo Street. Missing combined parcels two seventy-four, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, and erecting new two-and-a-half, two-family dwelling with rear decks and four off-street parking spaces. The violation is Article sixty-five, section forty-two. The application of dimensional requirement conforming to an existing building alignment, Article sixty-five, section nine. The number of allowed habitable, habitable stories has been exceeded. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good afternoon, members of the board. Joseph Feaster from the law firm of Mackenzie and Associates, one eighty-three State Street, Suite Six, Boston, Massachusetts. Joining me is my colleague, Timothy Frazier. Um, the architect on this matter is, is, uh, Timothy Johnson, we've heard from, uh, previously on, on a matter. And my client, Shirley Bragel and Michael Bragel are on as well. I'm gonna ask Mr. Johnson to, um, proceed with presenting the plans to the board.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Feaster. Uh, Tim Johnson, architect, five ninety-nine East Broadway, Boston. Madame Chair, members of the board. My client, Shirley and George Bragel, are proposing to erect a two-story, two-and-a-half-story, two-family dwelling with four off-street parking spaces and combine two lots. These will be two duplex units. If we can scroll to, these will be two duplex units. The first floor and lower-level unit will be a two-bedroom unit at one thousand three hundred foot, twenty-four square feet. Those are fine. Those images are fine. And the upper duplex unit will be three-bedroom unit at one thousand three hundred thirty square feet. Uh, all units will have rear decks, and we will build to the stretch energy code, uh, per city code. That's a quick overview.
Okay, Mr. Um, Johnson, I'm looking at Lorenzo Road. Looks like these are all attached dwellings, and it looks like, uh, there's maybe five of them. The last one ends with a brick with a bit of a bay window, and is the, is that vacant lot next to it the lot where this proposed dwelling is going to go in?
Uh, yes, Madame Chair, that had, uh, that is correct. Um, and the lot behind it, which is landlocked, we're completing the, the lot that fronts Lorenzo with that landlocked parcel. This previously had an address of Sixth Berry Street, uh, but we are orienting the, uh, building toward Lorenzo Street.
And is it a separate lot or, um, you know how, um, is that a separate-deeded landlocked lot in the back? Is that what it is?
Uh, it, 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 currently it is, ma'am, and that's why we are proposing to, to combine that landlocked lot with the lot that fronts Lorenzo.
Okay. And, uh, how are the plans, Mr. Olick?
Mark, you're on mute.
Thanks, thanks, Mark. Uh, I wasn't aware. Um, the drawings are a little problematic. I, I understand the reasoning for reorienting from Berry to Lorenzo, but by doing that, you created a rear, uh, dwelling and front yard parking because the, 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 given that the entrance now is from Lorenzo, you've got four cars that are, uh, in front of the house, and so that's a problem. The other problem, um, is that we've got below-grade bedrooms.
Yes, the, uh, the lot that fronts Lorenzo, Mr. Olick, uh, contain, contained the original parking for the property. There was an existing garage there. So the, the use of that front parcel has not changed. It's the existing driveway.
No, I, I, I know, but by reorienting it from, from the, the approach being, uh, from Berry to Lorenzo, you've essentially moved it from being backyard to front yard parking.
Right, well, it came, it came out of necessity. You can see Berry Street access was only eight feet wide to the, to the landlocked parcel. Uh, there was no room to, uh, to navigate, uh, from the parcel to Berry Street, uh, through that eight-foot-wide, uh, passageway. That's what I...
No, I mean, I, Mr. Johnson, I, I understand the logic. I'm just saying that the, uh, consequence intended or unintended is that the result is front yard parking, which is a, which is a problem for this board.
So, so, um, so let's go to the, um, building, the proposed two-and-a-half-unit building, two, two-unit building. So I missed out. So this is to erect a two-and-a-half-story, two-family dwelling. Can we have a rendering to see what that looks like?
Uh, yes.
And what is the square foot of each unit?
Uh, yes, Madame Chair. Again, these are duplex units, so the first and lower level is a two-bedroom at approximately thirteen hundred square feet, and the upper duplex unit is a three-bedroom at approximately thirteen fifty square feet. And to address Mr. Olick's, uh, comment about, uh, bedrooms in the lower level, uh, unlike the older utility basements, which are seven, eight feet, eight feet below grade, this floor is five-and-a-half feet below grade with a generous five-foot-by-five-foot window well, an interior perimeter drain to a sump, and we are outside the one-hundred-year flood plain. So it is going to be high-quality interior space even at the lower level.
So, Mr. Johnson, um, the issue really is that this is new construction, and I think with new construction, there is a way that you can completely avoid having units in the basement. You know, um, so I, I, I toss it out there because I think we are really getting overly very concerned about the fact that we are seeing all this basement space, and then this building, on top of it, is a building behind buildings. Um, so, you know, there could be, there could be density issues clearly related to this. Um, so I need to understand from you what, what your client's perspective is, and from Mr. Feaster, uh, about eliminating those bedrooms in the basement. Um, playroom is fine, but bedrooms we are having, continue to have issues with.
Well, Madame Chair, I'll speak to the, the, the question. I, I was made aware that this was a concern, uh, that this board has had in recent years with regards to that. However, uh, in going through the community process, and speaking of that, as well as what the point that was raised by Mr. Johnson as far as the, um, non-impact because of being in a, outside of a one-hundred-year flood zone, um, trying to create different types and, and a mixing of, of unit types to provide the maximum space, it was felt that this would be desirable. And in the conversations with the community, that did not become an issue. And I know that this board has had that concern even when I was there in certain neighborhoods, cause certain neighborhoods had that. If that is a pressing concern for the board, then obviously, um, we would rather not have you deny this matter. We'd, we'd like to go back and take the opportunity to address that particular concern in another redesign. I'm a little more concerned about the point that, uh, that Mr. Olick has raised. This too was a conversation that took place with the community with regards to the reorientation of the property. And that reorientation was done not only because of what Mr. Johnson said is about, about the narrowness of the access from Berry Street, but there was also some matters pertaining to the water and sewer connections that were there that were resolved. So this was a generous conversation, uh, with the, with the community and was found to be unacceptable in a, uh, community meeting that we held on October twenty-ninth. So I, I know the board's propensity and general objections to, um, front yard, uh, parking. I see this a little bit different, Mr. Olick, only from the standpoint of, of, of course, you were correct that this previously had a garage that was in the rear, but I would, uh, I would say that, uh, and I would ask Mr. Johnson to give some examples, cause I believe that, uh, you've had some of those, Mr. Johnson, that you might be able to persuade the board to support this.
Well, uh, again, the, uh, the building proposed two-family replaces a two-family on that landlocked parcel. Um, the parking on the parcel that fronts Lorenzo, uh, is, is replacing a dilapidated garage. So we are not mixing uses. One par, one parcel had housing and the other parcel had parking. As Mr. Feaster said, we had to reorient it because of the access from Berry Street, and the, and the water and sewer coming off Berry was shared with the other properties, and had to be a very, a difficult situation with the abutters. So all new sewer and water will be coming off Lorenzo.
Okay.
Well, I just, uh, this sort of, to finish, to complete this conversation, um, I completely understand why, uh, you did what you did. I, I just don't know how we handle the, the, the reality that it is front yard parking and perhaps because it's a, that's a rear building and landlocked, maybe we look at it, uh, somewhat differently, but the reality is, it just is front yard parking. And with respect to the basement units, um, as, as Mr. Johnson said, they, I looked at the plans and the section, it's five-and-a-half feet below grade. That's, um, that's, uh, that's substantial. You know, the, the, as you know, the, the minimum to the, the sill height for a window is forty-four inches, so you've got five-and-a-half feet, um, uh, of just wall space, uh, that, um, is underground. And, and I think that this board increasingly is trying to avoid that. And to, and to Mr., uh, to the chair's comment that, uh, new construction, it's one thing to argue that, that that's the only option in renovation, but new construction should have more flexibility, so, um, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Madame Chair, members of the board, Patrick Trandell, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This went through, um, a robust community process. There was two abutters meetings for this proposal, uh, and they were in contact with the Port North of Civic Association on numerous occasions. The merits of the zoning were... The merits of the zoning weren't of concern through this process. There were concerns related to, as Mr. Feaster made note of, the sewage connections from the private way on Berry Street and the parking situation. So I just wanted to note that for the board, but otherwise, we would be in support of this proposal.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice so that the applicants can come back with a redesign that speaks to some of the concerns.
So, Mr. Olick, is that better to do with that or defer it one more time? They've heard about our basement issues. They might come back faster if they, if it's a deferral.
Well, if it's without prejudice, they can come back as fast as they want. So either way, it's fine. I have no preference.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I speak to that particular point? I would ask for the board's indulgence for the deferral because if we come, starting with a, in particular, only with the COVID and trying to get the project managers and ISD's attention on some of these matters has not been as swift, and that's understandable. So if we add a deny without prejudice, Mr. Olick, we have to start over again. So I would, I would, I would invite the board, if they would give us a deferral at times when we can come back. Sometime, I would say, possibly in February, that would be our.
Okay, that's, it's a good project. And I'm sure that you can solve some of the issues that have been raised. So I'll make a motion to defer.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
We have a date of March 23 at 12:30.
Okay, Mr. Feaster, it's a little before you turn one year older, huh?
That's right. You remember it. I was just going to say that. That's exactly right. Well, maybe I'll get a birthday present for Olick, so we'll see. I want to wish you all a happy holiday and hopefully a much safer and healthier 21.
And same to you.
Good luck, Joe.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, calling the last case, the call of the chair. Case BOA 106-2676, 11 Dainer Avenue. The petitioner seeks a determination that Inspection Service Department aired an issue on the permit. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, I will note that Mr. Legris is back on the call.
Thank you. I saw, I saw that. Thank you. So is there anybody, is Mr. Ralph Rosati or a representative up there who's on this, on this meeting?
I don't see him in the chat. Is there any other names? They may be under. Oh, there's a caller, hand raised.
Okay, Mr. Kirk, are you, do you know anything about Ralph Rosati?
Yes, Madam Chair. He is, he had a doctor's appointment today, and he's getting a CAT scan, so he was unable to attend.
So you are attending on his behalf?
He didn't write anything, but he did tell me by phone that I should be there, yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there, and is there anybody here that represents the property owner?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Attorney John Pulgeni on behalf of the property owner.
Okay, so, Mr. Pulgeni, I have the first question for you before we go into, into a decision. I just need clarification on that office use. Can you tell me what it is that that office use is proposed for?
Yes, the office use is, it's going to be accessory, basically, where people would drop their rent checks off in a manager's office.
Oh, for God's sakes.
It's going to be a, the building management office?
That's correct.
And you're stating that it's an accessory use?
To the main use of the building, correct.
Accessory to main use, okay. So, Miss Ambassador, can you please mute? Can you, now that we know who's here?
I'm talking, sorry.
Who is this? What I want to do, Miss Ambassador, is mute every single person but the board members, okay?
All set.
Okay, everybody's muted. Shirley Bragel is muted, everybody else. Okay, good. Okay, so now, we, as you know, for these cases, we usually reach out to the city of Law Department. And the reason I asked Mr. Pulgeni for a clarification is that my notes had said that it was accessory use to the main building management. And the IS, and the Law Department needed clarification on that. So now that we have that, the, we will essentially state that we are looking at this and we feel, and as stated by the Law Department in their, in their information to us, that this is located in the Cleary/Logan Square area. Thus, the parking requirement is one parking space per dwelling unit. I know there was some question as to which parking district this was in. So, I mean, sorry, which neighborhood shopping district this was in? So based on the analysis, it's in the Cleary/Logan Square neighborhood shopping district. Thus, the parking as an accessory use, the ratio is one-to-one. And the building management office is also accessory to this residential use. Thus, the recommendation is that ISD did not err in issuing this permit. So may I have a motion to that effect?
Motion that ISD did not err in the issuing of the permit.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Kirk, for coming, being part of the meeting today, and Mr. Pulgeni likewise.
Madam Chair, the last order of business is the hearings that were held at 10:10 Mass Ave last Thursday. And I'm going to call them into the record, and we just need a motion at the end. So I'm going to call each one into the record. Case BOA 112-2437, 102 High Street was a renovation, a kitchen garden level and 145 square foot rear garden. It was approved. Case BOA 999-494, 6 Mount Vernon was heard to, was deferred to 11 of the subcommittee, 2021. Case BOA 111-8027, 135 Athens was heard today. Case BOA 102-9539, 66 Dorchester Street was denied. Case BOA 113-3098, 15 Nera Avenue was a complete gut rehab. The existing structure was approved. Case BOA 112-1041, 36 Gaston Street was deferred to the subcommittee, I'm sorry, was deferred to the full board on 112, 2021 at 12:30. Case BOA 113-0250, 251 Savin Hill Avenue, it was denied without prejudice. Case BOA 112-1148, 18 Spalding Street. It was the new dormer on the right side of the home and extend dormer size on the left side. It was approved with BPDA. BOA 112-7963, 23 McDonald Street was to prepare a site for a sunroom addition and moving the siding. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 109-9592, 215 Dainer Avenue was a first-floor, second-floor, and attic renovation. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 109-0178, 7 Aubrey View Road was to replace, I'm sorry, was a two-story addition on the north of the rear yard and an entry vestibule at the south front yard. It was approved with BPDA. Case BOA 112-3884, 3 Paragon Road. It was a razor roof in existing house and build a new addition. It was approved with BPDA. And that concludes the subcommittee's report of last Thursday of 2010, Thursday, December 3. We need a motion.
Motion to concur with the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Well, congratulations, we've completed, yes?
Madam Chair, this is Jim Kirk again. Sorry. We had three violations that we were, that we were, that we had brought forth. They have a parking garage on the first floor.
Mr. Kirk, you just heard our decision. So we are looking at parking garage as an accessory use to the main use. It's not a parking garage, okay? So, Mr., we are just concluding our meeting here, Mr. Kirk, so thank you. To the, to my fellow board members, thank you. I, we, as I said before, I'd like to have a meet and greet on Tuesday. We have a number of alternate members, a few new members. And I'd like to have a meet and greet on Tuesday at 10 o'clock. Okay, so thank you, everybody. And Kevin, if you can please help us with that. Everybody else is on the call. See you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you.